Thanks, everybody. So, the next set of comments and input was from Canadian members. I think, Steve, we had two community meetings, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. On the economy. And I tried to match the kind of the order of input from, you know, from each of the three sets of conversations that we had. Again, this is from your community members. Delapidated and vacant commercial buildings. And remember what we asked them. What are the big issues, right? That you and the community will be facing over the next two, five years. Remember, that's the context. Okay? Low local wages. Lack of economic development programs and incentives. Lack of communications regarding economic development. Need job opportunities for youth. Need more light industry. Invest in trades professionals. Low wages for teachers and health care workers. Housing. Lack of construction. Price sign of affordability. Need housing to address the growth of the community. Delapidated and vacant commercial buildings. There must have been a person that used that word, "delapidated."
Yeah.
Workforce housing wage-based. Rental prices are a big issue. We heard that frequently. Need diversity of housing choices. Townhomes. Senior housing is an issue. This one, I think, said it right. TORA Investments, is that?
TORA.
TORA. Urban Renewal Authority.
Uh, TU.
Right.
I gotta do more work on my acronyms. Lack of contractors to build and upgrade. And we heard that from a lot of people. Land to build on. I think that's a topic of conversation as well. Homelessness. Lack of a shelter and for rehab, the resources are largely private. Regarding tourism. Travelers on I-25 offer a big opportunity for tourism. The infrastructure does not support, currently support tourism. Advertise ourselves better.
Excuse me, what does that mean? Infrastructure does not support tourism? What did they mean by that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know either.
I don't know.
We can have the water.
Right, right.
Water or electricity? You don't figure that out?
Yeah, yeah.
It could mean, like, the I-25 overpassed, but I'm just speculating.
Well, and for you, okay, so for you, you hear a comment. I don't know, you know, how to interpret that. But it just is, it draws a, oh, okay, do we have, do we have the infrastructure to support tourism? Is how that, you might respond to that, right? And so that's a question you ask yourself ongoing, right? So that's, I think, how you use a comment like this. It doesn't necessarily have specificity to it, but it just can prompt thinking, right? Okay. All right, do we have the infrastructure we need for tourism? It's a great question. Location of businesses that detract from visits to the city. When you come off the ramp, are there businesses there that say, yes, come here?
Yeah.
It's a question. It's a good question, right? Develop an identity for the city to reinvent itself. We need buy-in from the community to do that. We must honor our past and market our assets and our people. Trust in new ideas and embrace change. What I observed in the focus group, there were more shorter-term, you know, recent people who moved here within the last 10 years than there were long-term residents, by the way. Trust in new ideas and embrace change. Fear of change by the locals. That's true in our community, you need to aware. Recreation. We need parks and recreation department. That came from the community as well. Some of the conversation about that is around programming. If you have a department, you'll do programming more. And if you have a department, you'll fund it more. You have a much more of a tendency to ask for money elsewhere and to fund it here as well. So there's quite a bit of conversation about that.
And I just want to point out, you know, I've heard lots of people say, that's not true. We do have a Parks and Rec Department. And what they mean by that is our public works crews maintain our parks. But as far as, I think, what Marv's getting at, programming, putting on events, youth sports, that type of thing, we're really lacking on that side of the Parks and Rec equation.
And that corresponds with a lot of comments about the kids don't have enough to do. And by kids, you know, up to adults.
Exactly.
Don't have enough to do. So a Parks Department is more, it includes, you know, maintaining the parks, but it also includes a lot of programming and partnerships.
And people. It's all age.
Yes. Do I hear that, Steve?
No, I never played. I missed.
So, "We need a rec center," was a comment. And there's a lot of interest, again, we've heard this over and over and over again, about an aquatic center, you know? And, you know, we know that the ballot measure failed, you know? To do this, right?
Well, not to do that, but to
What was that?
Increase the lodging tax.
The lodging tax. To do that, right. It wasn't even a local, no, it was a bond issue to increase the
No.
It wasn't a bond issue. It was just a measure to increase the sales tax.
It was, yes, increase lodging tax.
Lodging tax only.
And to change the verbiage of the ordinance to make sure, because the original lodging tax was for marketing.
Only. This is true.
Well, we have changed, that ordinance has been changed.
It has been changed, but the extra taxes
Right.
Were very low.
Wasn't a bond issue. It was a measure to increase lodging tax. Why did it fail?
It coincided, I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, it coincided with some developments in the city that were perceived kind of negatively.
Oh, I see.
And a restructuring of that board, went from the lodging tax board to the, no, I'm sorry, tourism, the lodging tax advisory board. And also, there were some other things.
There was just too much going on at that time.
Yeah. We didn't, as a city, we didn't do a good job in advertising tourism.
Your campaign was
Yes.
Right. Historically, we have success, though, I think, in getting ballot initiatives approved.
Okay.
Yeah, but that one did not, did not go through.
Thank you, and I apologize for misstating that it was a ballot issue, but it, you know, obviously, it was something that some people wanted, but it failed on the vote.
I actually think if we put some kind of bond out there to fund an updated rec center or a new aquatic center, it would pass. Because that's what I'm interested in. Dear the board that.
We can talk about that, then. Okay. Need a rec center, indoor pool, aquatic center, and block contract. Infrastructure. The one that came up, sidewalks. One thing. Community issues. The culture of the past is dominant. Adaptability for the future is at issue in the community. And I think that's a question to you, right, as a council, about the adaptability of the city for the future, right? This is a leadership opportunity, I think, for you. There's toxic social media. The community is very aware of it. Need more things to do for kids. Elder care is needed. Community pride, morale, and to become less reactive. Better trust in institutions. That's the side why, as we well know, but it is a limo on here, too. Again, micro children's activities. Desire for more library activities, more literacy work. Many concerns about the schools. And this is a summary, and I heard it a lot, a lot. Safety, safe spaces, drugs, laws of music program, et cetera. This is just what I heard from the community, though. I heard it from your staff extensively. Safety in parks and presence of homeless people is an issue. Community engagement is an issue. Again, we had a nice turnout after the community meetings. Most of the people there were people who have come here in the last 10 years. Because I asked, I didn't count, but I asked. How many people have been here over 10 years? And like, one or two people were raised. Bum and bust economy is part of the history. The divide between new and long-term residents, this just came up lots in the conversation. And a feeling of abandonment from the rest of the state or the state of the homeless. Emotion on sustainability, I think that was kind of the thought of how important that is. And when it was the comment, was the long-term commitment to improvement. And land use. And I don't know what that was about. I don't remember. Somebody talked about, you know, are we using our land in the ways that we might? It was, yeah, I'll just deal with that. I think the desire is that you'll report more on issues that you're working on. I heard a lot of desire to hear more from you. What's going on? What are we doing about parks? What are we doing about tourism? What are we doing about, you know, infrastructure? What are we doing? And this is really common, that, you know, government struggles to communicate with people. How do you do that, right? What are the best ways to do that? And it's, you know, I talked to Steve, this is a real struggle. It is everywhere. How do you do it? You know, there are five ways to communicate with people. Social media, the press, press releases, all that. What I would say about the plan, okay, is that you, as council, have to be the communicators. Of course, you'll put it on your website, all that. And that's a big, that's a big non, right? But when you talk about it in person with your constituents, that's where the power lies in terms of communication. Parking is an issue. Potholes are an issue. Leadership by the city based on consensus, new and older residents. A real desire to create a vision around which everybody can rally and come together on. Even though this, there's this feeling of divide between long-term residents and more recent, you know, residents, no one likes it. No one, I heard, said, yeah, that's how we should be. Everybody wants to change that. And that's why I mentioned that this plan may be one way to help you do that. Incentivized community involvement. Follow-through on community actions. Utility rate increases. That's on people's minds. Communications from the city regarding healthcare, education, benefits, businesses, and job creation. We heard the communication theme over and over. And actually, you're getting it more from your own staff than we heard from you or the community. Need a message alert system for city residents and businesses regarding closures of streets, emergency services, et cetera. Diversity and representation in city government. A lack of expertise by city employees and officials. That was one person that said that. And I was very surprised at that. I think that's much more impression than reality, okay?
But it was one person?
It was the one person that said that. It was one person. I can remember that person very well.
Okay.
Better trust in institutions, issue first, here and everywhere. That doesn't mean you don't pay attention to it, that it's everywhere, but it's very common. Follow-through on planning efforts, collaboration, and inclusion. I think there have been, maybe in the past, prior to any of your terms, there might be some things that the city has started or said they were gonna start, but didn't, or didn't follow through and complete. That was a sense I had from a few people about trust. So your ability to communicate the results that you're after, why you're doing that, and on an ongoing basis updating the amount of progress, I think, will help the credibility of the city a lot. Maintenance of community assets is really an important issue. And there was a lot of comment about the update or the maintenance of the parks. I remember one gentleman I was talking about, he said, you know, there's a kid's slide that's had plywood over it for six months.
I was at that meeting.
You were, well, probably the same person said that at more than one meeting. But anyway, that, that was on people's minds.
Marv, can you ask a question?
Yeah.
Up in, I'm sorry, my voice is just cutting out.
Take your time.
Excuse me. Getting the leadership, I'd say, based on consensus of new and old residents and creating a shared vision, that's certainly what I think we all want. But how can we do that if long-term residents don't come to strategic planning input? And I think that, like you said, noting another absence, that there may be purpose in that absence. And I think probably it goes back to what someone, I can't remember, said, I'm sorry, about how the city has had strategic plans in the past or comprehensive plans, but people never really see how they're put into effect. It's like, oh, yeah, they just do that. They talk about stuff and
It's just on the shelf, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. So I think if they understood that actually how we intend to spend money and who we intend to hire, what departments we're gonna have are based on this, they, we get more buy-in.
I think it's, I think it's worth buying. I think it's worth doing. And it's like house, you know, communication is like housekeeping, right? You do it again, and you do it, and you do it, and you do it. You do it relentlessly, over a number of years, in very personal ways, you know? And it's, it's like the same problem with communication. Invite people to a meeting and they don't come. Public isn't here today, as an example, right? So, and you didn't really invite them, it's just an open meeting, right? And of course, that's what you're doing. But I think here, you're gonna have to go to them. And it's okay for you, on their behalf, to create a vision for the city, and then explain it, share it, promote it, encourage it, and use it. That's what has to happen, I think.
Usually, what my experience has been, is that when we do something, make a decision, and we act on it, then you hear about it. Well, I wanted us to do that. And like, you know what? Would have been helpful if you'd said that then.
Thank you. This is a participatory democracy, right? Come participate. But it was notable, how few long-term residents were there, and you're gonna have to go to them. There's probably enough apathy or doubt, if you will. And I, I don't know enough to really attribute your reasons. It's like, you know, why do the, you know, the athletes up at the college don't come downtown, right? Kind of have to ask them. And I think, I really think, council, that this will be part of your purpose going forward, is to reach out and really communicate about this plan, engage people with these issues, and honest believe that it will, you know, it will be successful in engaging them, and this will become, and the city will become more, you know, meaningful to them, if what you're doing matters. And the other thing about it is, and we talked about this from the beginning, I know we're doing a lot of discussion before making decisions, but I think that if you talk in terms of them instead of you, it will make a big difference over time.
One thing that I was thinking about, that I think would be really cool for us to do, is after we have our strategic plan drafted, let's do multiple community meetings to present it, and do it in different locations around town. I know that we're a small city, but
Go to the neighborhoods.
Yeah, we could have one here, the senior center downtown, just kind of spread them out, and maybe that'll encourage more people to come. There is still that perception that it's very hard to park in our downtown, so I think people coming to the stage should create that, that can be a discouragement for them to come out.
That, that very well could be. So, yeah. Go to them. Go to block parties or wherever it is.
Community meetings may be a good idea also, for
Yeah.
All these things about lack of communication, people not knowing, I think one of the best ways, because people don't read the newspaper anymore, social media, I know I'm digressing, I apologize for that, it just seems like we have, because like council reports, you know, hearing from, people don't pay attention to that, I don't think. So, community meetings might be a really good, you know, way to get the message across about what the city is doing as well.
You're right, and one of our big challenges is, how do we communicate? We, it's so challenging. The perceived lack of communication, I think there's two things going on. One, yes, we could get better at communicating, but also, the information's out there in the form of council meetings.
Right.
I've actually never seen a town that's done so many community meetings, at least since I've gotten here on different subjects. Participation tends to be very low, so sometimes, not everyone's on social media, so that's not always the best place either. It's really hard to find what is that channel that's gonna hit the most amount of people so they understand what we're doing.
And those are the people that complain, but they don't vote when there's an election either.
That's true. That's true.
I think community meetings, it's like, it's an IV to the brain, I don't know where it is, and you're such a good communicator, bless you.
Yeah, don't mind doing this.
Yeah, and your IT, man, IT skills.
There you go.
Yeah.
Anytime we have the opportunity to set the record straight or answer questions head-on, I think that's very helpful to us.
One method does not work, right? So, I mean, you take, you know, every opportunity and everything you can imagine to communicate. So, the desire is, if you have a plan that you can really, you know, get behind and do that with. So, let's see. Follow-through on planning efforts, collaboration, and inclusion. I think follow-through is really an essential part of building credibility and maintenance of community assets. And these are the things that we heard from your community members, okay? And then we're gonna dive right into, we had two separate focus groups, I believe, Steve. We had one with department directors.
Yep.
And then we had one with multiple staff from different departments. All right, the economy. Local hotels, I think, again, the question that we ask, what are the big issues, right? That you see or are experiencing over the next two, five years? So we didn't ask them results, we asked them about the issues. Local hotels believe that it is the city's responsibility to make sure they're successful. That, that chafes on everybody here. The council has been pulled into helping nonprofits to be successful. We are lacking skilled professionals, that means trades professionals. Housing. About affordable housing, what is affordable? That's a question. We lack a base of employees because, and it should say, they can't afford housing if they move here. And this is true in every Colorado town that we work with, is that it's almost, at times, impossible to hire someone from outside of your community because you can't pay enough for them to afford housing.
Right.
And that goes to workforce housing, basically. There's a lack of contractors to build or renovate. We heard that from community members as well. Airbnb taking housing off the housing market, that is a policy issue for Airbnb community.
Yeah.
There's a lack of rentals. Need to work on policy for short-term rentals. Again, there's lots of policymaking around that if you choose to do it. Lack of housing causes people to leave or to not come. It's hard to bring industry here if employees have no place to live. There's a lack of townhouses with less maintenance and more community feel. There wasn't a lot of conversation about tourism, kind of struck me a little bit, that you talk about tourism a lot more than your staff talks about tourism. The community talked about tourism less than you talk about tourism as well, right? So you're really, you get, you're really leading this, right? So there's a lot of bringing people along, okay? I didn't hear, I didn't hear hard resistance to tourism, a little bit in the community about, well, are we ready for that? Does everybody want tourists to come here? It was that question. And the answer is, no, not everybody wants tourists to come here. Okay, fair, right? But I was just gonna say, you have a lot more, I would say, intelligence about tourism than, say, the community does, or that your staff do. That's, that's all, just where it goes. Need to offer people experiences they can have here. And that reinforces the experience that Darcy and I've had in Yancey County, where before we did a management study in 2014, they were, the Tourism Association was marketing specific businesses. It didn't work. They shifted to market the experiences that people could have, and that was a sea change. Really important. Recreation. There's a demand for recreation amenities, and I apologize for, I think that's camping and other assets. My apologies. Indoor pool, trails, adult recreation, sports are an issue. Lack of understanding the traditional amenities actually require ongoing maintenance costs, right? It's like, if you build, you know, tennis courts, you know, we looked at the tennis courts over by the, the high school, and there's just, they're an eyesore, right? So if you look at, if you build an aquatic center, what you have to know is the total cost of ownership over years, right? Not just how much it costs to build. And I know you know that, but your staff also know that. You have very intelligent people working for you, and very committed. I asked for raises of hands a couple of times, and the people who work for you are very committed. They're a little bit discouraged about some things. The lack of community understanding of what they do and why they do it, right? So if, if the city in general is not communicating, they don't see citizens understand why they're doing what they're doing, and they feel kind of attacked or underappreciated. Community issues. Must become visitor-ready. That was terminology that I heard from several of your, you know, professional staff. Homelessness and vagrancy, vagrancy are issues that they feel need to be compassionately addressed, okay? An issue is a lack of feeling safe in the parks, and that drives away tourism. There's vandalism as an issue. Drug use and inflation, example, are national issues requiring the city to be involved in trying to deal with issues that we were never involved in before. So, I think that was pretty thoughtful insight. Homelessness is creating an issue for people spending time in the parks and they're gonna go off. Retention of young people in the community. It leaves an older community, if there isn't retention of young people, it leaves an older community, and they don't necessarily like change, and they become kind of complacent about, you know, making any improvements in the city. There's nothing to do, there's no jobs. The answer from youth is, they're leaving because there's nothing to do and no jobs here. This sounds like Iowa. My joke about Iowa is, you meet us everywhere because we're all left, right? So you don't want to be Iowa here, right? Be Iowa. We need to invest in the youth and make it appealing for people to come back, whether they're in school or military. Who is moving here? California, Texas, moving to the country, getting out of the city. The availability of land to build on, there was a sense that there isn't land to build on in the city, and I don't know if that's true or not.
It is true. We, we have very few areas left, but it could be for larger scale housing developments.
All right, so when we get into that, you know, housing, et cetera, you talk about whether, what your policy is on the annexation.
Yeah.
Remote workers, retirees, artists, and entrepreneurs. There was a desire to have all those people here. Retirees bring money, but have different expectations. They feel they have, that we have antiquated processes, and they want different amenities. So when you have people move into a rural area like yours, this happens everywhere, and they come from a bigger city or a place with lots more resources, they bring those expectations of service delivery with them. A couple of our other customers, you know, Prescott and French Doris County, Virginia, are dealing with that. They've had a lot of influx of people from larger places. They've had a lot of influx of people from larger places with more amenities, higher taxes with more amenities, and they get frustrated with the speed and the quality of services. So, in a way, that's a positive thing over time because they bring those expectations that may raise the performance of the city as well, but it creates tension, you know, while it's happening.
So, a lot of communities would compensate the amenities for the sake of actually paying a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. Right, right? Well, if you tell people what they're going to get for the money, you stand a better chance of getting them to invest in that. And if they look at it, they can be, if it can be seen as an investment in their quality of life, you know, there's a lot greater chance that they'll support that than if you just tell them what you're going to do. Or we're going to build pickleball courts. And they go, so. Many people on boards have an inflated sense of self-importance. That was a direct comment. There's been a lot of tension. Boards being sort of overbearing feeling of staff is that they've been overbearing and over-directed and disrespectful to staff, and I recommend that you take that seriously.
I think that's, I'm glad to understand that, and that that's a way of thinking. I think we, I think we as a city should do some overhaul of how we work, interact with boards. We expect a lot of our boards, and we honor them by appointing them, and it's become a bigger deal to be appointed.
Yeah.
So, I understand that they feel like they've been imbued with responsibility because they have, and then when they, I think they sometimes feel like nobody cares about what they're doing or they're taken for granted. I think we should change entirely the way we think about them, that we should take them very seriously and give them actual real responsibility and hold them accountable for results. And then I think people would actually enjoy being part of a board.
That makes, that makes sense, yeah.
I don't know, what do you all think?
I agree.
Thank you. Longtime residents or citizens don't like the new rules that we're imposing to deal with the growth of new people moving in. That's a rub. We're trying to impose processes to allow for people to be treated equally, and that's part of your role.
What new rules do we do?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. Sometimes, you know, in these meetings, someone will make a contact, comment, and I don't have the time or whatever. Maybe there's, everybody's trying to talk, and I don't have the ability to follow up and say, say more about that, please. Sometimes I do, so I'm not sure. And there may be a sense, there may be a misperception there to council members and citizens. I mean, they may think you're changing their rules when you're not.
People moving in and change the rules.
Well, every time a new person moves in, the community has changed.
Yeah.
Sure.
The dynamics change.
And every time a person leaves, the community has changed.
That's right.
In other words, the community's changing all the time.
Right, but we're not imposing new rules in response to that.
So, interestingly enough, there's, there are staff that hear that, right? They're hearing that, they're not saying that. What they're saying is they're hearing a community member say that, so that's a communication opportunity. Okay. Next, retention of young people in the community is a big issue. It leaves, am I going in the wrong direction?
Nope.
It just repeats, I guess, huh? Leaves an older community and they don't like change and become complacent. There's nothing to do nor jobs. The answer from youth is leaving because there's nothing to do. We need to invest in youth and make it appealing for people to come back. We're lacking skilled professionals, lawyers, doctors, plumbers, carpenters, electricians, and we need to offer experiences to draw people here as an experience.
I'm going to group my roller coaster yet.
Right. Neighbors helping neighbors with improvements. They talked about kind of the erosion of social cohesion that people are asking government to do things that they used to do for and with each other as families and neighbors. And, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of refreshing to hear people talk like that, right? Because they're conscious, the people who work for you are conscious of that change because they're on the front lines feeling and getting the demand, you know, requests for services, and we heard this from your, from your fire department and your police department, that they get requests to help people do things that family or neighbors used to do for each other. And there's a lot of it.
Yeah.
There is a lot of it. They want to see a bridge between all community members so that everybody can come together around some important things to do. Homelessness creating an issue for people spending time in the parks and the riverwalk. That continues to come up a lot, okay? Local schools are a big issue, kids are leaving Trinidad. School system, we go to Primero, ENE, Branson, and online classes. It has a bad reputation, and boy, that is true. The school sports are very limited, especially at younger ages. We noticed, we went by last night, and the football field is immaculate.
Yeah.
And the high school building looks like it was built in 1961 and not just since. I mean, really, from the outside. So, okay. The community, this is really important. The community has lost confidence in the schools, and we heard that from your staff themselves.
True.
The community may think that there is a connection between city government and school.
I don't think it's a may, I think there's a lot of our community that don't understand that schools are not the city.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a pretty big issue for you guys.
It is, and I think we have, you all don't really have much of a relationship with the school board, right?
Well, I'm trying to bridge that, you and I went to that.
Yeah, that was helpful.
Yeah.
I'll tell you about a 45-second story. So, in Oklahoma City, the community, industry, everybody wanted to improve the schools, and the schools were not really coming up to speed. Technology, the facilities, teacher salaries and all the rest, they were starting to really spiral down. And there are a lot of really powerful, you know, wealthy people and corporations there, like Oklahoma City. And what they did was they said, we'll do a bond issue. At the time, it was just one of several, $750 million. But we won't give that money to the school to administer it. We'll only do it if the city administers it.
Wow, gee, man. That's trust in city government.
That's trust in city government, and the lack of trust in the school system that was failing to really do the job. And they felt that the money was there, but it wasn't happening in sweet. I mean, literally, they raised 750, you know, three-quarters of a billion dollars to improve schools, but on the condition that city government would actually run the project.
That's like the kids getting allowance, but the parents are telling you how to spend it, or they're spending it for you.
Yeah. Or your brother has this thing, you know? But that was really powerful, and they did it. They raised the money, and they, the city did a fantastic job.
Wow.
Yeah. That was really an interesting experience. And you need to establish a sense of community, I think, that they live here and they care deeply about it. They even have very, very good employees.
Yeah.
You really do. They feel a little underappreciated by the community. Communications, we're larger about communication. Community doesn't know what we're doing, but they know what we're not doing. We do not have a very engaged community. The local paper is not favorable to city government. News and social media have been very negative, and the positive stories don't get published. And if you don't tell your positive stories, nobody else is doing it, so it sounds like. We typically, there are election items passed, and that shows that we still have some trust from the city, from the people. There's a small minority of people that try to sabotage the city and what we're trying to accomplish, acknowledge. There's a very small group of people on social media chattering about government. Complacency becomes a big part of the problem here.
Yes, for sure, like old-time radio.
Yeah, I hear that. I think they feel a little bit blindsided by information rather than planning, which could create an emergency situation. Poor communications within the organization affects the community as well. I think, I mean, Steve, you and I have talked about this. I think communications are a big opportunity for you, both internally and externally. Public needs to understand that they are in control of government. It's not out there someplace. And they're feeling that, I'm using my words, feeling in the community that they have from the community is that government is sort of being objectified out here someplace. Community should be encouraged to come to council meetings and address council to reform. The gap between what employees know and what citizens know is all, I'll tell you, that is an issue wherever government is operating. The lack of knowledge creates a lack of understanding of processes, creates dissatisfaction, complaints, creates distrusting government and a negative attitude toward government. People are not going to want to pay for more taxes if they don't trust government. Election results are affecting, people remain quiet. And this lack of understanding affects morale of employees because of the animosity toward employees they feel from the community, and then employees become bitter toward others' employees. It becomes difficult to not take stuff personally when you're committed to our jobs or community. Pretty real stuff.
It's true.
Your folks were really honest in this conversation. Let's see, did I live on that? Right, so is it blind? So, again, the community is blindsided by information about, you know, something happening rather than proactively, you know, creating an understanding of what's going to happen. There were complaints from the community about street closures that they swore that they didn't, they weren't notified of, which may or may not be true. Poor communication within the organization affects the community. The public needs to understand, I think I've read this, haven't I read this?
Yeah, that's a kind of a review of what's about.
Okay. Community should be encouraged to come to council members, council meetings, and address council. And there's a real gap between what employees know and what citizens know. And that lack of knowledge creates a misunderstanding and mistrust of government. See, I think I read this.
Yeah, those are all reviews, except for the speech.
Yes. How's that, the communications?
I've done that, okay? So, I think, let's remember, I've done that. Okay, so, in governance, there's a lack of funding to keep up with needs and economic development. We need economic growth, we need jobs, we need restaurants, we need good education, access to medical care. There's a lack of mental health services here. We're falling behind on our own community growth. Sometimes lines are blurred as to who is responsible for issue and who deals with what within the city. Free labor unions that can cause delays in moving items forward is an issue. Elected officials make promises, then staff has to administer without a heads-up and the ability.
Quit making promises, you know, just kidding. Yeah, right. Full humor.
Make attention to that one, you guys.
That's right.
Either that's somebody's perceived or reality or perception of reality.
Promise-makers.
Yeah. Well, bring them along, everybody, bring them along. Don't surprise your own staff.
That's right.
And I think that comment stems from a lot of, I'll just be, well, a former elected official who, I think the intentions were terrific, but sometimes we were surprised some of the commitments that had already had made. But I don't want you all to think that that's an issue we're necessarily seeing right now.
Okay. It's a question, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Apparently, there was some.
Quick comment, Steve.
It was trauma about that.
He was wondering who, and I was telling who.
So, that was fast trauma.
Right, right.
Boards are attempting to dictate to staff what should be done and trying to push agendas forward. And what that, what that sort of says to me is that there's a lack of clarity of roles, right? There's a lack of clarity of the role of boards. There were some comments about sometimes boards that are advisory, have like, you know, they're policymakers.
And our comprehensive plan of 2017 placed direct responsibility for certain accomplishment of certain goals of the city in boards.
Yeah.
And so, at that point, huh, we are saying, yes, boards, you do have power to direct something. So, I think we've either got to clarify exactly what they're doing and why.
There are some legacy issues. In fact, I believe funding was allocated to the boards as well. So, many of them had full, robust budgets.
Yes.
Which now we're not doing, and I think that has left a little bit of confusion as to, you know, wait. We thought we had authority and spending authority.
Not this guy is really important.
Right, it's true, it's very important.
Do you all sit, does somebody from the council sit as a chair or a liaison liaison of every board? Okay, so there's, there's close oversight. And direction comes straight from you all to those boards?
That varies by council person.
Yeah.
There's, I don't think there's a clearly defined role of liaison or liaison on doing.
And it seems like more of a role of spectator, right? That's what it would kind of ask you, not be an oversight provider or telling them like, oh, no, no, don't do it that way. Right, you're really more, is that correct?
There's an issue that lays on us that I'm going to present to council.
Right, yeah, it's watches and then briefs.
Yeah, all right, bring it to Steve if something comes up. And I help him with Robert's order kind of things. And, you know, just kind of, I know what they're supposed to be focusing on because I've read the ordinance about that board. And so, when they get off track, I'll say, well, that's not really per view of this board.
That's very helpful. But there's a lack of understanding of roles.
Right.
And staff feel a little bit run over by some of the boards and feel disrespected by, by some, some board members. So, just a heads up.
And I will say, you know, we've had, I think we have several open board seats right now. And we have had, I, I think some transition from the 2017 operation model. And so, a lot of the people who have this perception that, no, we tell the city how to spend money, we tell the city how to set policy, I'm starting to see that go away a little bit. The only thing I would be concerned about, I think Mammy is right, we need to, maybe better define what the role of a liaison is to a board commission. However, as an individual council member, you really shouldn't be speaking on behalf of the entire council to that board either and saying, this is council's policy, this is council's direction, unless you've gotten clear direction from the rest of the council to do so.
So, this is an area, right? This is, this is a really nice heads up, I think, through this process to you. And, you know, because we're not going to have that whole conversation here, but it's a heads up to you that you need to have that conversation. And continue, as you reflected, continue to clarify the roles, especially when people are coming on, new, and clarify your own role as a liaison from the council. And also to clarify to your staff what the role of the board is, or whatever you're talking, whereby you're talking, and their role, right? I think they feel sometimes that the boards are actually trying to direct their work, and that's not appropriate. That only comes from one source, and he's sitting right here.
That's right. There have been some kind of domineering boards that were involved with particular staff members, and that didn't always blend well, and I think that's.
That's the exception.
Exactly, and I think a lot of that has been taken care of.
Yes. These are just clues.
I know.
They're clues about a lack of real clear roles and authority. They're clues about a lack of real clear roles and authority, etc. That's all.
If nothing were to change, the potential for it to happen again.
That's exactly right. Yeah, that could be a great motivator.
So, there's a lack of staff to provide services in some areas. Poverty is high here. All utilities experienced an increase in 2023. Trinidad has low utility rates compared to other places. And I would tell you as a consultant, that's no great badge of honor.
I agree.
Elaborate over that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
What, what do you mean? Let me add, so, so do you have like 10-year plans for replacement of equipment in your utilities?
I think so.
Do you, well, if you do, you start building those replacements into your rates.
Do you know what EVs are going to do to your electricity?
It's just a projection.
Well, oh, but it's not, right? If you're, if you're talking about sewer pumps, the life of those pumps is well-known.
Right.
Right? So, we work, one really exceptional department on wastewater is in Clackamas County, Oregon. And their communication toward their, you know, their rate payers is exceptional. They're building into their rates the replacement of all their equipment over the next five to 10 years. And they increase their rates, you know, incrementally with real clear communication about what they're investing in. They're building resources when that pump goes or is, you know, toward the end of its, you know, obsolescence life, they're replacing it before it goes out.
Well, that's good to have force, I like that.
So, that's what I'm saying is that unless you're really planning quite a ways forward about your infrastructure with your utilities, you're not, you probably aren't building that into incremental rate increases. And if you're selling to your rating, your rate players that we're going to increase 2% per year over the next five years, that's different than saying that we're going to ask you for a 10% increase this year.
Well, we already have an aging infrastructure, so the projected analysis.
Plan for it.
What's that?
Right, plan for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can give you guys a couple of good examples. On the wastewater side that Marv's talking about, we have a 23-year-old centrifuge for dewatering. And Jacobs, our contractor, is saying, you know, we really should replace it. It's not if, it's when it's going to go out. So, we don't have the budget, obviously, to buy new centrifuges that are about $300,000, $400,000,000. So, instead, they've removed the current one and they're having it serviced. But we're actually having to bring in a separate company to do the dewatering and pay money for that while this is being serviced. Whereas, you know, Marv's model, what he's talking about, we would have just had the new one ready to go, plug it in, not had a gap in service.
You have the money in the bank.
And what I'm getting at is, stemming from the strategic planning process, I think it's very important that we move forward with some robust capital improvements planning. And that's something we don't have in great detail right now. We're a lot more reactive than I think we should be when things go, go out. And, and I think what Marv's talking about on the utility rates, certainly we want to keep them as low as possible.
Yes.
But we also want to have, you know, enough that we're collecting to build those reserves so that we can plan for this.
So, where does the emergency funding come in?
Scramble, I mean, for the last, since 2015, it's been mostly marijuana that's really kind of saved our tookus on, on major utilities improvements. But now that marijuana is dwindling, we don't really have that cushion at this point. So, it is getting to the point where, now, however, with the rate increases that you all disbursed, that is intended to help build up our reserves as well. So, the question is, is it enough to build for what we need? So, again, I think we need to go through some capital planning exercises after we're done with our strategic plan. So, we have a good sense of, okay, wow, this half-million-dollar piece of equipment needs to be replaced in 2027. How are we going to pay for that in three years?
So, councilmembers, that's what I was leaning at. So, it's no great badge of honor to say we have the lowest utility rates possible. Well, but do those rates include future infrastructure requirements, right? So, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that we see organizations, you know, work with utility and they've got these really low rates. But then the question, that's great. But the question is, are you, are you setting rates so that you'll have the resources that you need when those, when the obsolescence of major infrastructure pieces occurs? Because it will occur, right? So, that's the idea, right? Are you, are you, you know, incrementally, you know, changing rates to also accommodate future investments so that you're not surprised when, you know, some big piece of infrastructure goes out and you go, wow, what do we have to do from that now? Instead of, instead of saving for it, in other words.
Guaranteeing that because storage tanks throw a lot of water.
Right.
Marv, I'm guessing that that has a lot to do with our legacy of boom and bust economy.
That's right.
Because when we were on bus, they'd go, well, we can't replace that. We'll just have to, you know, when this one goes out. And then hopefully something else will have happened and we'll have the money for it.
That's true.
But a city that's lived that way hasn't never put into place, let's set aside money for the future because they don't have it.
Whether that's streets or whatever it is, right? And, I mean, this, this is really, I think you're right, councilmember. It's a, it's a frame of mind as much as it is where your economy is, right? And the other aspect of that is, you know, the terminology, and I'm not speaking about you as an organization, but organizations that, that don't sort of plan ahead like that, they're hoping for results. They're wishing things are going to just stay the same, right? Whereas, as we know, infrastructure wears out. And you're, you're experiencing that right now. So, you know, if, and, and this happens more often than not, is that, let's say, something goes out, like a, you know, $400,000 piece of equipment, and you go, wow, we didn't expect that. And wow, how are we going to pay for it? And wow, what's the down, you know, what's the downside of, you know, an arduous, you know, solution? But that's all I'm saying, is that those things can be built into rate, you know, incremental, real small rate increases over time. And we know what it feels like, you know, when your insurance company says, well, I mean, we're going to increase, you know, your, your policy by 5% this year versus, we're going to increase it by 30% this year. You know, it just has a very, has a surprise aspect to it that's not necessary, is all I'm raising.
It is maybe one of the most important financial investments you can do as a board into the trust of your community. If the electricity goes out because you can't accommodate peak demand because your infrastructure can't hold, the electrification has come in. You lose their trust. When you invest and you can, you don't have to turn off a much of the water thing is, but you replace it and there's like a seamless flow, you build trust in your community and your ability to maintain and manage their home, their town. So, it's not just that you're just setting aside money. Those funds are instrumental to building trust long-term. In my.
So, your rainy day fund, Steve, that doesn't accommodate a lot of the future infrastructural needs?
It's helpful. Yeah, it, it has been helpful. But I, I mean, I would say it's a very small percentage of what the actual future needs are in terms of infrastructure upgrades and, and major things. So, for example, at the landfill, we bought a used dump truck last year because we can't afford a new one. I think in, in Marv, what Marv's saying is, why don't we plan? Okay, we know the life cycle of this truck. We go through, you know, the depreciation of it and then we just replace it once we get to that point.
How many municipalities just go daily operational and not worry about tomorrow? They're not good.
You know, more than you would think. But a lot of the, the very sophisticated cities are really on top of planning for these things. But I, I think also it goes back to our communication discussion earlier. We need to explain why, you know, if we do any kind of a rate increase even on a small scale, why is this important for building our future?
Right. So, one of the things that organizations like that, that particular department does is they, they consistently report on the quality of the effluent that is put back into the Clackamas River, which everybody cares about. And that, in a sense, is the two really largest, most important results of their treatment, right? That the effluent that goes back into the river harms nothing, right? And it's actually true. The other, the other thing is systems failure, right? Did anyone have a sewer backup because of lack of, you know, pumps or, I forget what they call it, traps in our lines, et cetera? So, they measure the customer experience as well as the environmental experience for what they do. And they just have this real robust communication with their rate payers about that kind of stuff.
Or even a substation.
Oh, a substation is just huge. We're working with a county that, that's like, you know, 30 substations are crazy and they're not being inspected or, you know, monitored very carefully. And, you know, they, we noticed that in a planning process with them. And they've now funded that position so that those, those substations are, are looked at literally every other day, right? To, you know, to make sure that anything's changed with the pressure it can serve. So, all I'm saying is that, you know, there are ways to do this that are incremental and which position you for the future in better ways than perhaps other, other approaches. That's all.
You know, I, I have somewhat of an observation and I'd like to talk to you all about it. Which is, it's been brought up, the phrase many times today, that we're a boomer bust economy. But in reality, maybe that's driving what we do as a community and it should. Because I, you know, I'm fourth generation and I remember this community hasn't changed any differently in my memory than it was when I was a young girl. Things have changed. You know, corporate America changed, left small communities. But what we have now and what we have had as far as economy in the city hasn't changed for at least 50 years. It ebbs and flows, but it's not a boomer bust. And I think maybe, just maybe, that's a deterrent to us to lack the planning that we need to do.
Boy, that makes complete sense.
I agree with Mayor on that because we forget about our sustainable, our sustainable businesses that have been here. You know, these barbecues been there forever, all these still mom-and-pop shops. When we do collapse, they keep us the flow. And they've been there. And I don't think we give them the news that they need.
Councilmember, how long have you been a business?
A business, ah, this is 16 years.
All right. Good example.
Yeah, so we're just consistent flow. It may not be a lot when you exist, but it's still, it's a consistent flow.
You know, and I think part of it, as a community, I think we're not being honest with ourselves because we will never be a Denver, not in the next 10 years.
What I heard is you never want to be.
I don't want to be.
Yeah.
Trinidad is good as what a, a small community is good for, quality of life. You know, look at the beauty around us in this community. And I think people, especially those that have been here for a long time, are waiting for an Amazon distribution center to come. That's not going to happen in the city. And it never will for us, probably. And I'm not being pessimistic, I'm being realistic. This is what we have to work with, let's work with. Don't expect some, you know, Christmas Day and Santa's going to drop us a big present. It's not for me. And thank, you know, we're here, those of us that live here, those that live here, you know, she's thrilled to live in Trinidad because of the natural beauty and the things that we have here. So, you know, are we not satisfied with what we have? That we always want to be something better, is that a problem?
I, I think those are great questions and really cause me to think a lot. But I think that what I've seen happen is when people kind of come to that conclusion about the city, they, they lower their expectations of what it can be. And that I don't think is good.
No.
Because there's a lot that we could improve. And it's why I try so hard to communicate this and I don't think I have to do a good job of it. But I, I see Trinidad as being, having potential for being a spectacular small town. A really well-done small town.
That's what you can do.
And, and that's what we need to concentrate on, to be a spectacular small town, not to be a small town that wants to be a big town.
Because I don't think anybody wants that.
I, I, I think so, and I think, you know, especially some long-time citizens want industry in here to have a lot of growth, you know? And I, pardon me if I'm off the subject, but I went to Denver last weekend and I looked at the growth loan tree. I mean, it's like, dear Lord, you've got these million-dollar houses that are five feet apart. I don't want that for Trinidad. I don't want that for Trinidad.
Yeah, we sure didn't hear that. Yeah. Let's do that.
I think people look at like Canyon City and stuff and they have like the Bigger Night Block stores in a small community. And I think that's kind of the picture that they're kind of seeing, you know, just a little bit more. Like here, in this size, you know, just a better manager, a better, a little bit stronger of something. And I think that's what they're looking for, is that convenience so we don't have to leave. You know, some of the things we go to Google for, we literally could get here.
The leakage is a concern, you know, but.
Yes.
Like I say, one of the problems that we're going to be looking at too is, so, I didn't have children. I'm not going to have children, you know? And my nieces and nephews had no desire to go into my business. So, when my business is gone, my business is gone, you know? And I'm seeing that more and more with a lot of the businesses downtown. Their children are leaving and they don't want to take over that business. So, eventually at a point, we're going to start looking at, okay, well, now that one's closing. But who are we going to get to fill it?
Right.
We have to be attractive at some point to get that replacement business in there.
And I appreciate you saying that because I, I hear comments all the time, you know, we need economic development in terms of getting big employers here. And we do have some economic development incentives that are all predicated on how many jobs you're creating. But then I think that's really interesting juxtaposed to, we don't actually have a dry cleaner in town. So, you know, it's, what, what does economic development really mean? And maybe, you know, we need to think about it in terms of just basic amenities as well as getting those employers to come here and be part of the community.
And probably both of them.
Exactly.
And turning around our school system.
Right.
Although we have no real way to affect that if we don't. I, I don't understand why people don't understand. That is the heart of your community, your school system.
It's, you know, it's one of the very first things that people look at when they're considering moving here, whether they have children or not. If they're an employer, they're absolutely, absolutely going to have.
Hey, when you said about relocation, you talked about crime. And I was going to mention schools right after that education.
Crime in schools?
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's perhaps the two first things that people look up on the internet or otherwise talk about, on the quality of schools. And because the, the quality of schools isn't just how they're being administered, it's about what the investment of the community has been in the education.
And the children.
Of the children and the kids. So, that's, it's a, it's a really big multifaceted indicator. And you have a big problem here.
Because there's the three, right? But, but forgive me, I can't remember what they are. But it's, when you move somewhere, it is, it's what, public safety or police department, healthcare and education.
Exactly.
So, those are the three that we should really be focusing on to make sure that we have those if we're going to be attractive for anything really.
And a, and a dry.
And a dry cleaner, whatever. Running out of suits.
Our 91-year-old, our 91-year-old dry cleaner retired about a year and a half ago. I'm going to, it's been a big issue for me.
Yes, a big issue for us all. I, I want Marv to share a little story, but it's something he said once and I never have forgotten it. And I use it when I evaluate the state of a community. And I use it when I evaluate the state of a community all the time.
Oh, oh.
It's not the Samah.
Of the Masai, you mean?
The Masai, thank you.
It's not the Samah.
The Samah, yeah, the Samah area, really different place. The Masai, I have a greeting.
I'm trying to remember what it is. Oh.
Yeah.
He told a story.
Okay, so he told a story. So we have, Marv has asked all the time and it's the Masai and he has spent time with his tribes. And when you greet each other, we say hello. Hi, how are you? That's our normal greeting, hi, how are you?
There you go.
What they say all the time are, how are the children? The children are fine. And their culture believes that as long as the children are fine and well cared for, that everyone is okay. If the children are not okay, nothing is okay. And that is taking care of their most vulnerable. And, um, you know.
Yeah.
If I can be honest, as a parent, I thought your middle school looked phenomenal and was beautiful. I would put my kids in your high school, it's not a plan. It looks like a prison. It's got bars on the walls. It looks uninviting. And I understand when you put children in an environment like that, it makes them act like that. And so your story made me feel like, well, of course they understand the judicial system of difference between this and the other, because they go to school in a prison. I'm sorry to be so, I'm going to be honest and it's, this is not your wheelhouse per se, but as Marv indicated, other places have taken that on and made that something that happens and we just can't do anything about it. They're your children, the city's children. So how you do and address that, I don't know, but it is, I, I think this town's bones are unbelievable, I mean it. And you have so much ripe and going for you. And when I saw the middle school, I was like, oh, that's, that's fine, that's a great school, it looks great.
That was the original high school, by the way.
Oh, is it, right?
And when I saw the, the high school, I thought, how, how can you go from that to that?
Well, maybe, maybe what we need to do while we're communicating the strategic plan is to also announce that we need the school district to become a partner with the city toward these goals.
Well done, yes.
I like that.
Which is a great segue.
Yeah.
Let's list what your big priority areas are.
I'm going to list education.
So, 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 Councilmember said education. We'll make a list and then we'll refine to five. And these are the big, big chapter headings, right? And within that, then you'll develop very specific, one, two, three, up to maybe four, specific results that you want to create within that topic area, right? So one thing, Councilmember, you might say, a priority is your partnerships. And schools could be one of those.
Communication.
To communication. Hey, Michael.
Proactive planning.
Planning. We haven't said, planning that or follow that?
Get with the program.
Yes. That's what I used to say to my kids. Get with the program. Yeah. So one thing you can do is kind of look at the chapter headings.
Sorry, I got lost. I was thinking, where were we at? Because we started at the five, so where do we, we're turning to the point?
It could be anything, we're brainstorming right now.
Oh, okay, cool.
Out of all the things that we've discussed today and talked about and thought about, what rises to the top of your mind as being some of the greatest priorities? And it, you know, we're going to make a list.
Correct.
Big, big things like, you know, economic development or tourism or infrastructure.
All of those.
Or.
Yeah, exactly.
The things that have come up.
Economic development is, is, is key because that's the longevity. Healthcare, already healthcare.
Healthcare. No. I think we got that good.
No, we've got a good, we've got a good system, but later on, if we do have growth, we, how much can we handle?
Aaron just said parks and recreation and that's been pretty huge to.
Okay. Makes the thing look towards the future if there's any.
Yeah.
We have to be able to, so mostly everything needs to be here for healthcare.
People hate it if a lawyer loses their voice.
But if you have a heart attack, what do you call it?
An angel gets its wings.
As the last arena that they can't service here, you gotta go.
And a bigger topic is professionals, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And healthcare is one of those.
Can we switch that?
Oh, we, we can switch all of them. We're getting it right.
I'm writing, like, you talk and then we can adjust, right? So, yeah, but what were you going to say?
I, I say instead of healthcare, put partnerships with, um, community partners like such, I mean, education and medical.
Can I just put a separate one?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, community partners is, is even, could even be, like you said, a priority area, yeah.
Yeah, because we have no private practices here and hardly anything.
I know.
Right, right.
It's, it's all in one, one lump.
Yeah.
And at one point we did, we had private practice, we had, well, now we just lost, we just lost a CPA firm, right?
Yeah, Dixon Waller.
Dixon Waller is gone.
Yep, that's right.
And we have no audit.
Right, yeah. Brian Blasey is a tax preparer, is now with COG. So that is, is gone. Ms. Bernelli, the CPAs are drying up, the lawyers are drying up. I'm sorry, I know you're.
The lawyers.
They are. And I don't know how you, yeah. And I'm sorry for giving, this is drying up all lawyers. Yeah, I know, I know, that's right.
There wasn't that sort of all of the professionals.
Yes.
Commers, lawyers, CPAs, and those are what you are getting at, the amenities.
And that's the same thing in healthcare, we dropped down, you got your optometrists and all of that, our eye doctor, we're out of eye doctors right now, except for what is hanging on. Dentists too, there's, it takes a while to get into a dentist, you know?
I take completion of, um, public projects like the Riverwalk and Exit Fourteen, South Hill. We have some things that are in the works that I think those, we've been talking about quite a lot, plenty more money into, they need to be done.
So, Councilmember, those are big interests that are part of the project.
And they've been allocated already, right? So they're already pretty well.
They're, they're in the design phase. Exit Fourteen's been allocated, Riverwalk, we still need funding to construct that. And then the other big one, just to throw out there, is Main Street Rehabilitation, which is in the design phase, but we don't yet have the funding.
I think it would be great for people to actually see us talk about something as we have been doing various professionally, planning something and then have it actually happen.
We heard that, you know, we, we heard that from the community.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'll bring you back Oklahoma City one more time. Stevens says, the, the city's motto is we deliver what we promise.
Yeah.
Wow.
Kind of great, that's such a great thing.
And my favorite one, under promise and over perform.
That one, yes, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, so we're looking for these big, you know, these big topics under which we can fit, you know, several things, several accomplishments.
See, and goes back to your comment earlier, Marv, I'm surprised not to see tourism on there, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So tourism.
One thing you can do is just have a big topic called the local economy, you know, the robust, however you say, vibrant robust, you'll, we'll forget the one you said, economy. And within that would be tourism, industry, small business.
Economic development.
Economic development. You could put, you know, those four things, for instance, under a broad heading of, you know, healthy economy.
I don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think what happens with tourism here is that my mind kind of wanders when I think of tourism here because I mean, I live here and I know there's stuff to do here, but I struggle when, when people say, why would I come to Trinidad? And I'm like, well, you know, I know you can go to Fisher's Peak, you can hike the things, you can go gravel, but I always think, well, because you want to be here, because it, it's a really fun place to be, there are good people, there's good music, there are some good restaurants. I, I, that's what I kind of, my mind kind of goes to rather than, you know, like a rice way or something that you're coming to see, there's, there's nothing like that to point to in Trinidad.
Right.
And the kind of partnering, one of the things is we don't really partner with the county. There's a lot of tourism, basically it's up there that they don't promote it here, but we've got people that have, uh, riding horse riding and stables and these adventures and hunting and guided tours and guided hunts. And none of that all comes into together because they stay here in town, a lot of them. And we just have to have something to show that we have so much more than just what's downtown. It's ride your bike and you can hike.
You don't have a consolidated vision of that or a way to say, you know, live outdoors in Trinidad or what, whatever it is, I, I don't know what it is.
Do you have people living outdoors?
Yeah, that's right.
We call it that, what is it, urban exploring or urban tactics?
You were going to say something last year.
Well, I was just going to say, I can read like a churning monkey. Um, infrastructure, do we have infrastructure? I don't think we do.
Yeah, that's got to be a big one.
And also, community issues, I mean, I don't know, right, but, but that is in here.
Be community life. And then you have, you know, whatever you want to accomplish within community life, what I'm trying, I think we're trying to do is kind of elevate the, the level of a strategic priority. Because if you did economy, for instance, we just rolled off, you know, four things you could, you know, measure and, and accomplish within economy. Same with infrastructure, you mentioned earlier, you know, the Riverwalk, for instance. That's something you want to complete. So you can, you can create these big categories and know that there's a lot of, you know, a lot of flexibility within those categories for you as a council to identify specific responses that you want to accomplish.
And certainly, do you say sustainability, but I think that's under infrastructure. You know, sustainability, like, I like what you had said because I've always kind of looked at on, I've been in, in, as a public empathic in my development times, you know, allowing you to sit there for so many years and grow and then they were able to blow it up and actually grow their community. But like you had said, with our utilities, we've got to be proactive with that, with our streets, we've got to be proactive with that. Because we've seen what's happened, you know, we've saved for the rainy day and then we weren't able to get, our streets are all the way up to the curves, you know, we did what we could.
Right.
Instead of actually being proactive. And I think with our rainy day, but I think we've depleted a little bit of that just compensating, which I don't even know if our public truly understood what we gave them.
Right.
You know, we took the hit so they didn't have to.
Right.
And now, but can't buy us a delivery, you know?
So I think from our point, I'll just put it out there, uh, one that comes to mind as an overarching thing would be quality of life.
Yes.
And how many of those, you know, we fit under that book and are still like important things to focus on it.
And that, that's a really nice catchment.
Yeah.
For a number of things, whether that's.
Parks and red.
Parks and red, or whether that's finishing the, you know, the amenities.
Yeah.
That you have. So you, you mentioned the, the Riverwalk and what was the other one, I saw it was still in the process?
Uh, Exit Fourteen and then.
Exit Fourteen, yes.
Main Street redesigned.
And Main, Main Street redesigned, okay. So those are kind of, you know, you can put those in economic development, you can put them in infrastructure, you can put them in quality of life.
Governance, governance is a great idea.
Alright. It's, it's a great idea. We see good governance as a priority area in a lot of plans. Because then you can put into that all kinds of things about like communications.
Partnerships.
Partnerships. Those are two really good things to put within governance as well. So what we're doing right now is you're trying to build the bones, right? The structure of what you're going to put in your strategic plan, you know, what are the big areas? How do you define, you know, a big priority area and then you can, you know, create within that very specific things that you want to accomplish. And also, just think about in terms of communication. Each of the priority areas is a story. That the city is focused on, let's say, infrastructure. The city is focused on quality of life. The city is focused on economy. And then within that, you'll, you know, fill in that story with the specific results you want to accomplish. But this is also a way, remember, you're going to, you're going to be, you know, the communicators of this as much as anything. So, you know, each of these will tell a big story about what the city is, is prioritizing over the next few years.
How did you phrase it, Marv? Did you say community vitality or something like that? Where we put economic development, tourism?
Yes, yes, you can do that. Community vitality is a really good one, or economic vitality is, is a good one as well. And, and everybody, you or we can, with you, can write like a little preamble of what that, what that priority is about here, right? Gunnison County doesn't write preambles. There's certain blunts about it, right? Economy, infrastructure, you know? They don't explain very much, but their results are, you know, they're really, they get good results. But you can give some context to what, you know, like community or economic vitality is, is about here. And then followed by the specific results.
Yeah.
So a lot of this is, how do you want to talk about this, right? What do you want to communicate to your community are the big, three to five big priorities? No more than five, please.
Okay, communications.
Communications, okay.
No, I mean, we want to be correct.
And by the way, if you never list in, you know, if you don't prioritize among the priorities, they're all of equal importance.
You want me to start another page because now we're picking from these.
That's okay, let's, let's just pick from there and bring it over here if it seems... So let's do this, so let's say parks and recreation, what big priority does that fit into?
Quality of life.
Quality of life, okay. Okay, good.
Well, community vitality and quality of life come almost near each other.
They're almost the same.
I kind of were, which I.
Yeah, however you want to talk about it, right?
So maybe.
Will it be community vitality more of the economic?
Economic vitality.
Economic vitality, to clarify.
That might make that clearer.
So you could do quality of life and you could do economic vitality.
Yeah. So we put communications under governance, but Mayor, you're saying.
Yeah.
It should be its own category. Okay. And that's certainly doable.
Well, not really, well, I guess they're interchangeable.
Well, one thing you could do is you could say, you could have a priority called partnerships and communications.
I was just going to say, it's the whole community that's having a hard time with it, about where from the school boards, the teachers.
Really hard on.
Housing, trying to get their, everyone trying to get their messages out, but there's not a strict cohesive platform that lets them all access.
And all of these priorities are going to be interrelated. They're all interrelated because they're about your community. So there will be, not necessarily overlap, because you're going to be able to differentiate what each of those priorities is about. But what you accomplish, let's say, in economic vitality will influence the quality of life in my search of. So they will all interplay with each other. Does that make sense, everybody?
It does, yeah. So let me throw one out there and I'll, I'll ask you all, which category do you think of the four we have up there would fit into? Historic preservation and maintaining our past coastline. Has that been in any of those?
That could be quality of life.
Could be.
Sorry, I didn't even ask.
Because I think we talked about that, Marv, about, yeah, some type of cultural center or a heritage center. Yes. Something I think we haven't touched base on here at all, because we just haven't used.
Exactly, and I'm not just talking about buildings, obviously, sort of culture.
And I think those centers, well, we have the arts and culture board, don't they foster that? They do the preservation of all that.
It's our part of the history.
But like the cultural traditions and tools in that of this area is.
Arts and culture is focused primarily on purchasing public art.
Digital, yeah, digital art.
So historic preservation.
I don't think that we have anything that's particularly focused on preservation culture.
We don't have an heritage.
It does a little bit. They've done some events that try to capture history.
They really try to do some more on histories.
And public safety.
Yeah, public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've seen in some strategic plans, public safety is its own.
Oh, my. Oh, my. In every major city.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Public safety is like, it's like a bumper sticker, you know?
I don't have that before.
You do. So as you think about, you know, these big categories that we heard, you know, let's just, let me read them out loud. And, and then kind of help you recall what's, and look at these while I'm reading them, okay? One is the economy. All right. Another is tourism. Another is housing.
I think housing would be a good one.
Yeah, we don't have that one there.
Right. That could be a separate category too.
Yes.
It is often in Colorado. And what we found is that, you know, these are particular to each community. But housing is a big challenge if you want to grow your economy and grow your population.
Let me explain my reason.
Please.
Because the council a couple of weeks ago talked about how many bad homes in Trinidad that should be under the anti-dilatation ordinance. So council had had a consensus that maybe we should start directing funds to get rid of some of these dilapidated houses and use the naked land for the capability of somebody coming in and building a night habit home.
Right.
You know, under that, we never addressed ADUs. We never addressed small housing projects.
Sure, rentals, yeah.
And I think, you know, I think it's, it's important when, on its own. So frankly, if you think I'm wrong.
Well, don't you think that the abating, like nuisance properties is more under governance? Or quality of life? I was just going to say that. Right? Rather than housing directly?
Well, I don't know. I'm thinking it's under housing because we have, you know, and they're increasing in Trinidad because these houses where you talk about the parents dying. Kids don't want to dispose of these houses and they're sitting there just being, they're not being used. They're right in the middle of town. Why can't we recycle housing like we do in New York?
What I would say, if I could, is that if housing was a big category, right? You'd set a goal for, you know, X number of units of a certain type to be built over a certain period of time. You could have another goal in terms of eliminating dilapidated buildings and houses to make way for more housing development. You could go after funding for, you know, house development. You could have three or four things under housing and the dilapidated properties is one of those.
One.
One of those, right?
One.
You know, it's, let me illustrate how each community is separate, different. At the time we were working with Austin, the biggest issue was traffic congestion. We were working with Detroit and the biggest issues were murder and vacant houses. Right? That's, that's how unique each of these plans becomes, right? It's really how, and look, you could subsume any of these within any of the other categories.
Right.
Right.
So these are just sort of really important decisions about how you want to communicate priorities and how you want to, how you want to, yeah, how you want to communicate about this. And how, over time, how you want to kind of categorize the decisions that you're making. Here you've got good choices, quality of life. Governance. Economic vitality, communications and partnerships, housing. So, you know, you could subsume any of those under any of those, right? So the idea here is, and it's almost a feeling, right, Mayor? It's not just head talk. It's also gut talk, right? How do we communicate to our community our big priorities? Right? So that whether they are here five generations like you or five years, right? This begins to make sense to them why you would be focused on these priorities.
Well, with housing management, I was kind of thinking, you went about a broader urban renewal. And I think it says all the community outwards into the residential to where we can go through and say, we need to take down these dilapidated homes to create a lot to be built on. You know, something newer is what we're looking at. And you look in a neighborhood, you've got dilapidated, dilapidated, beautiful, dilapidated. Who wants to buy that beautiful home when those two are sitting around it?
The old property guy.
It does. And it makes people want, they're not attracted to that area. So if we can actually give them some type of lot or land that they can, they can build a beautiful house. I think that would be a way, because right now, trying to flip that house, it's just not happening. I mean, that role isn't really working out there.
Housing, housing could have a subplot about annexation.
Could also have a subplot about artisan craftsman.
Yeah, absolutely. So each one of these has abundant opportunities to identify specific results that you will give direction to and Steve, that you will work to and the council to accomplish.
What I would ask, is there anything you all can think of that wouldn't fall into one of these five categories?
Oh, that's a really good question.
That's why you get paid the big ones.
Is that why?
Great question.
It's a, it's a good litmus test to see, are we, are we capturing the correct headers?
Okay. One is homeless. And what we got to be under housing?
And house falls under housing.
Yeah, or quality of life as well, depending on where you're asking.
Or communication partnerships.
Or economic vitality.
Okay. So when you bring up the topic like houselessness or homelessness, you have plenty of options for where you put it.
Exactly.
And that's a good thing.
So infrastructure would be a question. Where would that go in these five categories? Is that under governance? It's part of our responsibilities.
I've seen a second of vitality.
Yeah, it's interesting to pull this up. Partnerships too, because we get a lot of grant funding for major infrastructure improvements and we work with CDOT.
So think about this, right? So if you've got big infrastructure ideas, right? So would you want to communicate about infrastructure per se? Or would you want to communicate, would you want to communicate and give direction to Steve regarding infrastructure as part of economic vitality?
Right.
Or part of something else? So how do you think about this, right? Is its own priority? In a lot of communities it is. In other communities, it's not.
I think in our area, infrastructure has to be one of the top main priorities because we're behind, right?
Like most, most small towns, old small towns, of course.
I think my pipe on my, I know my water pipe was put in 53.
Yeah.
And that's, and they got some, a list now, but it was like since 1953, that's a long time to, to not have that replaced.
Yeah. So what are the big topics, right? What are the big headers? Is the conversation that you're having?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to cut infrastructure into a big heading and then.
We can start it out.
We can start it.
Thank you.
No problem.
I also wrote this. I don't know. I thought of her, do we professionals under economic vitality?
I like that.
Yes.
Sure.
Infrastructure could go in good, pretty good on this.
It could, absolutely.
I, I would tend to recommend that it not go under governance.
Yeah.
Governance has more to do with how you govern. And like, you know, focusing on performance or creating a customer-focused culture or partnerships goes under there if you wanted to do it there. But I would say infrastructure is like public safety. It's very outward-facing. The good governance can be a little bit more where you talk about what you're going to do or how you're going to be.
In communication.
Yeah.
Communications would be a good one to go under governance if you wanted to change that.
I'm wondering if this should just go back up.
That's what I think. I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's under governance, it's our policies, procedures, ordinances. Yeah.
How you communicate outward, how you communicate inward. I think it's a governance issue.
I do, yeah. I think they're important to be part of the plan, but I like them under that heading.
So right now, this chapter names look like quality of life, governance.
Right.
Economic vitality, housing and infrastructure.
We're just tourists under again.
Yeah.
And we keep leaving it off, which I think is something we should pay attention to.
I think you should go under economic vitality.
Okay. That makes sense.
I think, I think we're out of, we really don't, we don't know where we stand as part of the tourism community. What, what do we have? We haven't really put that out there yet to see exactly what, what we're bringing them all into.
Right.
You know, we've got, we've got the park. And we talk about this, we're not really pushing all of that yet. So that's why it keeps falling off. Because it hasn't become part of our legal game.
You don't really have a strategy yet, a cohesive, you know, articulated tourism strategy. Yet.
Because I think what was that I told you, Mark, that day? I was like, I was like, we don't even have a ball of yarn. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, you gotta do something, right?
But you're known about something. You automatically know where to go.
Yeah.
And, and we have to find that focus and say, you know, are we, I mean, you know, all outdoor activities or are we going to be? You know, what is going to be our main selling point?
I hate to say that we don't have a game plan though with respect to tourism, right? I mean, I don't want that message to get out.
No, no, because I don't think you have an actual, not the game plan, but what is it? To be known for. I don't know how to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That bank.
Real stone. Yeah.
Thankfully, though, the lobby tax, they hired a marketing company.
Good.
So make sure they don't, make sure you, they listen to you rather than the reverse.
They, they are.
Good. Good. You gotta watch consultants.
On a tourism point, something somebody said in there, and this is really, I've really been thinking about this. They said, if you, if you have tourism, everything else will come along. You'll have saved streets, you'll have vibrant communities, you're going to have all these things.
Yeah.
And it's kind of like what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
The reality is, is if, if you are able to have tourism, that's going to be the result of you all having this infrastructure in place. So as I struggled with, with thinking about your specific community is that tourism as a result, because you already have the attractions. You just need to, who did somebody say polish, polisher?
Polisher.
TLC. You just need to do a little T-dog.
That was not TLC, right?
And, and I will say something else about tourism. Be very careful with your intentions. I, we live in a tourist economy.
Careful what you wish for.
Careful what you wish for and you add the benefit from tourism. Very much so. And do it with great intention and specific what you want and what you don't want to come with it. Housing is a problem already. Housing gets worse with tourism. The other part about tourism that I just kind of lost. I'll come back to it. But there was something else about this whole, you know, the chicken or the egg. You know, I think if you feel like this place is really cool. As a Coloradan, I'm always seeking to, you guys have better infrastructure than Grand Junction. And they have this beautiful vibrant downtown. Did some work about 10 years ago, 15 years ago. And people come to Grand Junction as tourism now. And if it's kind of built, they will come versus if you invite somebody to your home and it's a disaster, they may not come back. And I think that piece is, not that you're a disaster, but you know, I, I hope that didn't come across the wrong way.
She's not.
No, if they can't find a restaurant to eat in because, you know, you know, you'll lose.
They'll come back.
Well, I think part of it's the old adage of a lot of our problems, let's look at them as opportunities.
Yes.
And tourism is a great one. Look at that with that lens because, you know, I've, I've been reading some articles over the last year in Durango where residents there are fed up with tourism. They don't want the city to be, yeah, they don't want the city to be promoting tourism anymore. Because they're tired of, you know, to be quite blunt, people coming in being rude and disrespectful to the community.
Oh, yeah.
Every restaurant being crowded and there being the wait, housing prices being so expensive. So I think it's actually a good thing that we have, we don't have 10,000 people coming here right now every day. Because it gives us the chances as a community, Darcy's point, to think about, what do we want tourism to look like?
You drive tourism. Don't let tourism drive.
It's a really rare opportunity. Like you look at Salida, they got discovered. It wasn't something, I think, that the town, to an extent, the town helped with that, but.
They sure did.
But yeah, but, but, but I think they also had a pretty good plan as to what they wanted to be.
So I, that's what I was, authentic.
Yeah.
So what people are wanting more and more and more, even when they come to Crested Butte, ever. Is, we have changed dramatically since COVID. COVID has turned Crested Butte on its head. And our community has changed and we're scraping to keep it. And the complaints the tourists have is, why did, and this was the same thing in Vail. Why do people love coming to our community? Because they would sit on a chairlift with the crusty butts. And they would ride up and they would go to the bars and sit next to the locals and they would engage in authentic community and locals. And that is gone. And so now you have people, when they come, they're like, I want to hang out with locals. I want to, I want to go someplace where I'm not with a whole bunch of other people from out of town.
Yeah.
And if you create authentic tourism where people can walk around and they're in your shop and there's a bunch of locals and they're engaging in your world.
Yeah.
That's what tourists, tourists want. When you don't go to, you don't go to Europe and enjoy Venice because you're there with a bunch of Americans. You know?
You want to talk to the gondolager, you know, you want to talk to the guy who's doing that.
Yeah, you don't want to be in a restaurant with a bunch of Americans. You want to be in a restaurant with a bunch of Venetians that are enjoying their wine and sharing their culture. And so I think that's where I really was like, hmm. Be careful with tourism. Drive your own tourism and be intentional.
And on the other side of that equation, if you want to attract people, you have one chance to make an initial first impression.
Yeah, that's true.
You have one chance.
That's true.
If people pull off the highway and there's an abandoned, dilapidated old hotel sitting there on the right, you know where I'm talking about, you're not going to feel comfortable and you're going to get back on the right. So we need one chance to make first impression.
Maybe, or just do TLC. I mean, I really don't think it's much that needs to happen. You kind of have everything. The ingredients are on the counter.
Well, two quick thoughts. One, I don't think we do a very good job of getting feedback from our tourists. We make a lot of assumptions about what they want, what they need, what they'd like to see, what, what, what they're looking for. But, you know, someone like Darcy, new to Trinidad, brand new to Trinidad, her perception's very positive of our community, right on with that. And are we, are we getting the feedback, I guess, from the tourists to understand what it is that they're seeing? I guess we don't know. Are they planning to come back and bring their friends? And then the other thing, to, to Darcy's point, just to hammer it in, the whole, on all of these things, a lot of these things, I think we need to think very mindfully about cart before the horse. Downtown Albuquerque is a great example. About 20. Downtown Albuquerque is a great example. About 20 years ago, there was a push to build housing and redevelop downtown and get people down there to live. And then people didn't wanna move there because there are no grocery stores, and grocery stores don't wanna build till there's people. And then, now, hardly any of the jobs are in downtown. So, you have this weird thing going on where people live down there but have to drive 10 miles out of downtown.
Such a reverse, such a reverse, a reverse thing.
In Albuquerque, it was very much that way. So, they've tried to revitalize their downtown and they just can't seem to, you know, make all the pieces fit together to make it a robust, livable downtown.
Prescott's dealing with the same thing. They've got a, a very important road that goes from downtown basically to the airport. And they're trying, and there's gonna be a lot of development there, but they're trying to get, for instance, a grocery store to come there with some incentives before the whole population is, is built out. So, it's hard, but that kind of advanced planning and being prepared for what you want to have come is really, I mean, that's really important.
And for Trinidad, it could be something as simple as, you know, we think Santa Fe Trail might be a great place for commercial development in the future. We should be thinking now, do we have the infrastructure in place so when business wants to come, open up there?
Is there water, is there?
Is it gonna, are they gonna have to spend a bunch of money and a lot of time for us to extend those utilities before they can develop? I think we can get out ahead of the curve a little bit on that, and that puts us in the driver's seat on how we're gonna develop as well.
You can build out that infrastructure for utilities before they are.
Yeah, so, it's, it's what, industrial park and commerce park?
Trinidad industrial.
We have industrial, but we have one right next to it too, and that one's commerce, right?
Yeah.
Is that one, do we have utilities and stuff?
Some, some, yeah, but I think we should look at it and say, does it have, if, if a data center wanted to come, bring 90 employees to do, you know, call center type of things, are we gonna be able to support that pretty readily? Or do we want to?
So, is it wrong to think that, just to kinda adopt the mindset with all of these, how do we survive without tourism? Like, is there one of them that we can kinda work with to, I mean, we know we need the tourism, but in case, let's say, we never got it? And should we look at something and say, okay, this is gonna sustain us even if we don't get people?
Right.
Diversification, diversifying your economic assets, how to level out the busted.
Well, I think we're there already, Manny.
We still, we stay pretty steady.
Yeah.
We just need to keep them sustained.
Be for the tourist.
Yeah, the tourism part of this here, what I'm saying, like, if we look at it from a different angle, in case we don't have it, we can thrive.
Yeah, no, I don't want it.
It's one aspect.
One, all your needs and one bad.
Well, you never should, right?
And I think we're getting away from that.
That's really important.
Because, like I said, my tongue's all twisted, tired. When the mine was here, we focused because they brought money. The railroad was here, we focused because they have, they brought us, brought in money. All these high industries, high near, evergreen, we focus on those.
Marijuana.
And marijuana, once again, but we forget all that other side piece. And that's, that's the part I think we need to realize and, and put that out there, that everything else, her business, my business, you know, all the little ones in town, those little downtown merchants all down there, we've gotta make them shine somehow, you know, that they are, they are sustainers, not just because one aspect brought in a large sum for a second.
In, in my experience living in Iowa, right, in those sort of recessions in 2008, and the Iowa economy was focused on one thing, guess what? Agriculture, right? Well, boy, did we take it in share. So, that moment was very clear that we needed to diversify our economy, light industry, energy, healthcare, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that is a much more sustainable model than looking at one industry. Maybe that's been part of the history too, Mayor, is that there was so much focus on one prosperous industry.
Fossil fuels.
Yeah, exactly. And, and you see that in Wyoming too, by the way, this is not uncommon, is that focusing on a diversified economy with maybe a primary interest in tourism as an example, because of all the possible, the potential positive things that come out of that with infrastructure, parks and recreation and, you know, the image of the community. But then, you know, also looking at other things, that's sustainable employment, like light industry as an example, right? So, having that broader view is a much longer sustainable, if one goes up, the other stays steady, you know, that kind of thing. You know, in Albuquerque, you know, the, the economy goes about like this. It never goes like this, right? And it's because it's pretty balanced, right? So, you know, that, you know, vibrant small town is really a wonderful notion of an economy that's sustainable over time. And by the way, tourism goes like this at the front end of a pandemic.
Yeah.
Right? It comes back up, but tourism is dependent upon disposable income.
Yeah.
Right? It's vibrant as hell. It's a liquid engine, but for the people who live here, you need more than one engine.
The other thing, I, I, I thought about, you know, a big industry or something, not oil and gas or fossil fuels, but pulse on it.
Yeah.
Something to come through.
Great example, yeah.
You are in a really great opportunity to lead and to set the tone of values, and that's kind of what you're doing right here, right? These are values to us. Some action needs to be taken to show those values in real time, right? There's some work that needs to be done. You wanna be sure that when you do attract a big employer, that they share your values. And right now, if you were to say, we have to get a big employer in here, you might not attract
Careful with that.
The employer that shares your values, because right now, you don't have everything that you value polished.
And big employers, right, a big lift, but we all know what's happening in the automobile industry, right? If that employer goes away, are you in another booming bus cycle?
Sure.
You know?
And I would say, if that is a goal of yours, probably maybe out beyond five years, but then you really have to take on this whole, in my opinion.
Well, we had medium industry here for a while, and that, that was nice in the industrial park. We had that salsa factory out there, we had Danielson.
Oh, those are crazy.
Things like that, I think we can attract here.
This is salsa industry.
No, they're all coming. And then we have AmeriGas out there that provides salmon, runs, you know, we have those smaller ones. The dairy factories out there. We need to attract more, I think, that kind of industry.
Yeah, that's right.
Versus that, let's bring in more of our distribution center that's.
Those are great industries.
Because they're. And our selling point is unobstructed access to highway right there. We have so much that we can offer, and like I said, that's why I was asking about commerce park. You know, we've got that stuff over there, you know, years ago with that, and I think we own all of it now again, right?
But, by the way, distribution centers have very low employment per square foot. Theirs, their footprint is enormous compared to the number of jobs. It's a real issue.
So, that's why I think the, the actual factory ones would be giving us some, some people to work with, you know?
What I liked about this conversation, okay, sorry. What I was just gonna say, you know, what's great about this is right now, if, you know, you all were to say, Steve, hire an economic development person and start going after businesses, we don't really have a clear roadmap as to what type of businesses, whether that's that person.
Which you can develop that, right? That's, that's, that's a very straightforward, you know, creative economic development, you know, strategy and plan, you know? That's a plan to plan, it's not a great result.
This is all like, this is in the planning phase, and we don't have planning.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, planning is not a result.
No, no.
Right, and that could be in the economic development, maybe?
You, you can develop plans within each of these.
And also, what are economic development? Do we want an expansion, like, yeah, the strategy slash expansion, so, you know, talking about?
And that could go under housing too.
Right, 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 looking for room for?
I was, under economic vitality?
Sure. So, one of the things you can do, right, if, 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 you know, creating an economic development plan or strategy is your only result, we would say, timeout, that's not a result.
Right.
But if it's one of the most important things you could possibly do, then include it as one thing, you know, within economic vitality, for instance.
Because if we're able to develop some type of, that, some type of development there and send revenue, I think that would be a great thing for downtown to be able to offer incentives to the business owners who can't afford to fix their buildings. Because I think that's, that's actually a problem. They're living, they're sustaining.
Right.
But they're not at a point where, yeah, I can afford a $5,000 to $10,000 on it to improve my outside.
Tourism is good, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's like, we can add to that, keep that beautification processes going.
And you know what I hear in the room is that it's not gonna take you, you know, a long time to develop an economic development strategy, because I heard one, it's that for him.
Yeah.
Light industry, you know, five to 20 employees, building out infrastructure and utilities so that, you know, future employers can see that they can come here, workforce housing, that's, that's, that, you just said, an economic development strategy is supporting small business.
The more I look at this, housing makes so much sense to be a subcategory on economic vitality.
Certainly can.
But it also could be its own standalone, so I just wanted to point that out.
It works either way.
Sure.
And that really gets down to story, right? So, when you think about budgets ahead, or you think about, you know, planning, or you think about developing a city, when you think about asking for money, is housing a separate category?
Yeah.
Or not?
And, and the mayor's saying the exact point that I was just thinking, less product annexation under economic vitality, but that also ties in with housing as well.
They will all interrelate, of course, but your, your decision is about how you want to frame the decision-making, how you want to frame a conversation with the community.
Well, and two, we've been focusing on housing significantly the last several years. We already have several, is it 100 units that are processed?
186, I think.
It's up to, I think, the current count's 107, it's fluctuating.
So, around 100 units of local housing that's in process. So, it's not, that's not something we have been ignoring.
So, it's almost operational at this point?
Yeah, to an extent.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Because most of those housing units are in downtown Trinidad, the apartments. And the, the thought behind that was to revitalize downtown in addition to getting apartments downtown for people to live in. But I am, I'm a, what is it, your right brain that's logical? I'm not artistic.
I don't remember what side.
Your left brain is the analytical, your right is.
I am totally a left-brain person, and in the back of my head, I keep thinking, is 107 units over building? So, the point is, in all of this, do we sit back and decide if what we're doing is, is beneficial or it's futile? I always need some kind of measurement. I like to have a measurement in all of these.
These will all be measurable.
Okay.
The strategic results under each one will be measurable results, every one of them.
Okay, I need them.
I do too. I don't love the feeling like, you know, Darcy and I are not gonna feel like we helped each other a good plan unless your results are measurable. These are just categories, right?
Right.
And there'll be specifics under each one that are directly measurable, observable, countable or reportable.
Yes.
Promise.
Okay.
Promise.
All right.
So, let's ask the question, do you want to have housing as a separate standalone priority, or do you see it as something within economic vitality?
I can be close on that.
I am worried.
With annexations there, right?
And we're using economic vitality in place of economic development?
I feel like it's part of my talent.
Okay. Economic development is actually a strategy.
Okay.
Vitality is the result.
Okay.
Well, one question I have, I know they don't develop housing, we're doing a, but we have the housing division that's federally funded, right?
So, that, in that way, it's.
They actually, they have a lot of power.
It's operational.
But you have to.
Oh, excuse me.
Not such a, a demographic. I mean, it's, it's driven by, you're talking about.
It runs all those under one, one flagship.
But I, that's not what I'm thinking about when I talk about, when we talk about housing.
I know what we, you know, we're talking about. We know about improving community life.
Right.
Because we go into the neighborhoods and we're not seeing a beautiful neighborhood in there.
Right.
And we need, and that needs to be marketable, you know, for to bring people in, we've gotta market our neighborhoods, because we got beautiful neighborhoods that are, that just you love. You know, and it's like, so I kind of get what you're saying, but in like, our emphasis on, I think, economic vitality, it would work, sorry, how's it going on?
Sorry. So, is there consensus to put housing there, but have it under economic vitality? Okay, right, let's do that. So, if we do that, we have qualified, good governance, economic vitality, and sustainable infrastructure.
I put the word sustainable to make it a result.
Yeah.
And these will be the labels, right, the big categories. So, qualified governance, economic vitality, infrastructure. So, I'll, I'll restate, reframe Steve's question, is there anything you can think of that you want to accomplish that doesn't fit in those four categories?
Seems like it'll fit.
And, and if we, if we, you know, move into, developing measurable results, if we find out that there's something that you wanna accomplish that doesn't, we can, we can, you've got four, you can have five, if you need to.
Well, a potpourri.
Oh, sorry, that's just.
I'll take that for 200.
All right, that's great. Let's, let's break until 3 o'clock, you have your strategic orders. So, come back and start going, one, each one will develop their strategic results, okay? Well done.
Yeah, we make this.
Qualitative, not a, 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 a.
I know.
They don't stick on.
I would, I would have them get.
Horribly giving this down now? To the spark, yeah. It was so nice to have a most good mayo and a little bit of pepper.
I don't know, I didn't know that was gonna be that.
I feel like the peppers now are going to waste.
You have any more, just as. My, my legacy.
Big apple.
Big apple is a girl, like, is a major.
How was your winter?
So, we took the kids to Montechou, December.
Nice.
It rained a lot there, because we were outside and it was power filled.
Oh.
So, it was, it was cool for a little bit, but then it just started to be annoying because it rained.
I'm sorry, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, that would've been a wonderful thing to do if it wasn't so cold.
Right.
Did the kids like it or what?
Right, I was saying.
That's more, that's more.
The 24 and 25, so why don't we say?
This is not. Five seizures.
Well, no, it's good for me. One at early in the morning, and then. They have work. When I was taking them.
Yeah.
It just kind of started in January or December.
Yeah, maybe, maybe they, you can like them. I'd say, yeah.
Oh, yes, I tell you. Yes, yes.
Very good.
Yeah. So, maybe they made medication.
Do they have that? Where's, oh, yeah, just make sure you're, yeah, just make sure your general practitioner's not, because that's a very shitty. They'll take care of us.
So.
So, we're gonna say?
No, I'm sorry, I'm Sunday.
Well, then they put me with a kitchen, there is one. Well, then they put me with a kitchen, there is one.
What, so it's...
Back to six days and then we'll have a back and forth, go half and one, five or six.
You're not gonna be outside at four, eh?
Why?
Because of our hot sleep. So if I have it now, you're gonna be up four, a lot of galaxies, obviously. And I'm getting nervous, I'll start stammering more.
I don't know.
I'd say that's not...
What should we do with the villages?
I think it's...
So, Denver's a great example of that. Their mayor, not only is...
Yeah.
They're also... Exactly. So, right, that's why I...
I think I would go back to...
So, but you should go out, but they said...
Are you gonna get back?
Okay. What's that? I'm gonna come back tomorrow.
Yeah. To run the daily operation.
Yes.
So, you know, I think we have, we have a lot of kids here, and you're not expecting something...
It was a conflict, it was from...
No, it's... Doesn't feel like paying or...
It's not, it's like you're in trouble.
Yeah, yeah.
But if, if like, if Josh goes like that to him?
Suck it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, well, tell him what he's done, and see how it happens. You don't... There was less, so, I mean, that was the problem, like, the race grant that we turned there, that was...
Yeah. Yeah, it's all... Yeah, how's it going?
You just do it on your...
Yeah. I think I would go back to...
Yeah. So, I think that... No, thanks for being here, this is good.
This is good.
Good comments, yes?
It's been awesome. So, I had a big going. I see you, you're the face.
Sorry.
I won't, yes.
You won.
I'm trying.
I would go back to yours. Yeah, good. Get lots of candy. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think I'll get one, we had this moment.
I was sure, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
I should see you on the table, also, like, you got...
Thank you, great joy. I think that's gonna, I think that's gonna move the process forward.
Okay, what's for breakfast tomorrow?
Oh, that's a good question.
Marvel, see you tomorrow.
All right, good.
Great job.
Olive to our casserole?
See, I'll see you tomorrow.
All right, well, thanks for being here.
That's good, that's good.
No, we're good. I'm just...
How else can we eat all dinner?
I wish you...
So, Eli, you were earlier. The last one.
We need some help. No, actually, because I'm just gonna take this. And, um... Do you see smoke coming out of my... Look at you. I'm not used to it. Oh, my goodness. There's no flappers in the fridge, you can't... So, and the... Takes them. No, I wonder why I have to... You know? Oh, my goodness. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll see you one in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll be here. Some interesting sour's answers, just...
Yeah. So much lies about this process. Pardon? A lot of things come out of this process.
Yeah, it goes to...
Nice, amazing.
Yeah, it is, this is a good facility. It's got a very nice pool out back that has a water slide and everything, it's very comfortable.
Are there any downsides to Corolla?
I think that's a good question. You're gonna have a lot of opinions there, I mean, if you get involved in their local government, they have a lot of residents that show up, especially in places that are matters. But we can tell something, I don't know if you can find any downside.
I'm not gonna get involved in it.
Yeah. They have a really cool old church there.
They do?
And they do, like, this world-class chamber music service.
Is that right? Oh, nice.
Yeah, so I got to see a lot of great performances there.
Oh, wonderful.
International artists.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah. There was a great string quartet that came through.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that sounds exciting.
It was good, oh, a woodwind quartet, and through two, Imani winds, and they're based in New York City, so... So that's, that's really exciting. There's a lack of retail in Corolla, so a lot of the shopping would be given taxpayers.
Just try to cut...
Yeah, if you've gotten good, yeah. Yeah, but, no, I think, I, I would have better hurt me, especially if you're retired, because it's very beautiful, it's very scary.
Yeah, and, you know, I think Charlotte is kind of, kind of working, I feel like, she's kind of...
She's ready just to...
Over that, I'm not, but, yeah, that's, I think she'll find a lot of things to do.
I think so. It's such a great area, just, I mean, there's so much here, maybe we should go to Santa Fe.
Well, yeah, you know, Santa Fe is just...
Yeah, exactly.
Close, with more outdoor stuff.
There's a really cool place, I'd like to go, it's not well-known, but if you go down, I'll take a, I'll be, before we just got out of Albuquerque.
Yeah.
Get around the mountain, there's a south trail, it's down there. It's called the Salinas Missions.
Yeah.
There's this, it's a whole tour, and you want a budget a day, but you can go to at least three major sites that are still very good ruins.
Really?
But when Spanish came in, in the sixteen hundreds, they conquered that area. And so you have, like, Kiva, you know, it's from the natives, and then these Spanish churches built.
Well, that's a tall, isn't it?
It is, it's a really, it just became a national, um, it was first like fifteen, fifteen years ago.
Salinas?
The Salinas Missions, yeah. And then going up into the Himas Mountain, there's a device called the... Probably my favorite place.
Is that right, really?
Yeah. It's an old, so the Himas Mountain itself is a volcano structure, so they're not part of the rocks.
Okay.
And the Caldera is the mountain volcano, and they...
You know what it says on the stone?
Maybe close to an ice...
I didn't know that.
Super, super...
I did not know that.
And then, yeah, I don't know, there's just so much to do around there. Albuquerque itself, I, I love it, I think it's terrific. It gets a bad rap, and I've never felt it, I've seen that before.
You haven't. Our realtor...
If you're down on Central Avenue, or...
Well, that's right. You're probably asking...
Well, exactly.
So, yeah, our realtor lives in Old Town.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Raisins is there. Yeah.
The whole areas, you go down Rio Grande, there's a nice, a line, you know, like, take a place, and then they'll be... Casa...
All right, so Charlotte and I are, are gonna issue the invitation now.
Okay.
Come to this.
I will, I'll come give you a...
And we'll, we'll just, you know, go, go do the tour. It'd be a blast, love to host you.
Okay.
Yeah, come on back.
When are you, when are you moving?
Well, we don't know, because we're gonna, we're gonna sell our house, because it's, you know, everything is there. And we'll start probably over a mile or so. I think we're closing, I think we're...
One of the cutest things in...
So, after that, we'll start moving things down, gradually. But, um, we need to stay with our house in, in Gunnison ourselves, because we have, we found this flat fee, really. Five, five grand for MLS and all, all of the documents and all the negotiation, but we have to show it.
Yeah.
So we don't have somebody, you know, sort of looking after the process, so it's gonna be, you know, what we were, so I was, I'm adamant, I'm not gonna pay somebody, it's just... And after the NAR lawsuit, nobody's... Fooled into it.
So like we came out, they, oh, I was all...
Yeah.
So I bought a house on the west side of Albuquerque, when I was very much aware that the...
We had men going here and...
It gave so much value, and that was terrific.
That's what you should do.
But yeah, it was, I thought it was really cool, and I'm excited.
And, and, you know, I, I know what it takes for me to create a hundred thousand. I know how hard that is. And to just hand it over because somebody says, oh, I'm gonna represent you, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna slick myself all up, and I almost put it on MLS, it's just like...
There were thirty years ago when houses were, there were seventy, sixty thousand million.
Maybe.
But now that you deserve a million, you have to... Chunk of money.
For what?
Realtors who do the upper echelon, really, always have to camp for houses here. They have a poor thing, it's all staying.
You know, it turns out, you have to, you have to stage your house yourself anyway.
And you do, you do.
And realtors are, they do that?
Yeah, yeah, you're exactly, you have to do everything.
Holiday.
Yeah, holiday. It is, it's a different time. Yeah, because I'd really... It's like, I think that's a little amazing, I was...
Reason for that.
I'm just reading that, I know why.
Yeah, but everything's digital now, so then, we let our bonds and noble card go because we were digital.
Okay, and then there were four, so... And I have to leave at a little before four, but if that's...
Isn't that cool? She is just my... If I would have had dogs before, I wouldn't have kids, the kids wouldn't have a... That's... She's beautiful.
Isn't here...
I name her.
You have the creative history, Mike has a baby.
Oh, yeah. They're an interesting group, but, so, I want them to kind of step up a little bit.
They will, they will. I'm just gonna get, I'm just gonna get some guidance.
They need a strategic plan.
I turned my dollar back in.
You did? You said, I don't want this.
I don't want it.
Okay.
And I did, I had my iPad configured and downloaded with the information...
Okay.
Are you having okay with your...
I forgot my... Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I'm running towards it, but I can't remember where I wrote it down, so I gotta change it. But I, I jump on the power app so much, I tried to do PC, and we lost, so...
Well, it looks, it is, it's not logging in, it keeps not, it keeps rejecting his passwords.
Really? Okay.
I remember my kid, I just don't remember my password.
Were they, I think what's useful is when we get to, when we get to our council voting system. So it's instead of touchscreen, we can just have them available in the council chambers, and then it should pop up when you're ready to vote on an item, and you'll be able to say yes or no. Instead of doing a roll call like we're doing now.
Oh, really?
That's really a best practice when it comes to council, because everybody should be making their own vote independently. So, a lot of cities are doing that now, where you vote, and then nobody knows how anyone voted until it pops up on screen after.
It's anonymous and everyone votes.
Yeah. So that way, if you get called last, and there's, you know, the potential for a tie, you, you're not...
You're not trying to avoid something.
Exactly. It gives, it gives a lot of power to the last person, so that's why we're randomizing the vote now, to at least mitigate that a little bit. But before, you know, Councilmember Williamson would have the final vote on everything, before the mayor, and so, you know, that, that's a powerful position to be in when you know you're gonna be called last. It gives you the opportunity to potentially vote no on something that you really want to pass, just for example, that, okay, no vote won't matter, so I'm gonna say no, so I can be, you know, for whatever reason.
I got a postcard, and it shows where they even keep track of the queue, so we won't have problems with whoever wants to speak.
You wanna...
The system will actually show the respondent first, and I, you can look at the screen, the presiding officer can look at the screen and say, one, two, three.
So is that a software program?
It is.
Oh.
Yeah.
Does it cross Apple?
Yes, it would work on Apple.
Yes. You can just get the city to change it.
I know, I wish, I wish Apple had kept up with business, because it's just... I know, I'm jealous of those companies overloaded with money and they can do all Apple.
We'll look at some tax initiatives, we probably could, just going that towards that, so we can upgrade the technology structure. I don't...
I told the IP, IP guys, I said, I'm just saying one thing, old dogs, nutritious, this old dog... They tried, tried to get us to use Dell computers, and I turned mine in and bought an iPad instead.
Now, when it comes to laptop, laptop, for just like working, I can use this, Mac was hard. I gave up on Mac, because like, it's, it was like relearning, like, how to write a Mac. I was like, every function key is different, everything is...
You can't get on my computer, it's a blessing, because it's a worship.
Well, see, I have my, my computer down in the office.
And it's, and it's weird, I can operate that, but like, this one, I was having a hard time, because I'm used to, I got used to my note taking, I installed the digital function. And this one, you have to have a certain program to go in to edit and do all this other notation stuff, and I was like, it becomes standard on that. Okay, guys, ready to go?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so I'm gonna make a suggestion, here, here are four, uh, priorities, uh, with, with your, I'm gonna suggest that we start with, uh, sustainable infrastructure, okay? So, thinking about results, um, what do you want your community to experience when it comes to infrastructure?
Seamless service.
What does that mean?
So that there's no disruption of service.
Ah, okay, has there been disruptions of service?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, great, so, um, let's write it that way, right? X percent of, um, uh, utility customers, um, you can do it either positively, do not experience any disruption of service, so that's the high number. You can also do it the other way, and measure, you know, the number, the percentage of customers that do experience, but I think you wanna say a positive, right? Right, so that would be, you know, you're looking for ninety-nine percent, something like that. So, um, that means including, including electric, water, correct?
Yep.
We can put a comma, including water, electric, sewer.
Yep, and gas.
And gas. This is about the customer, right? Okay?
Sorry, I'm just trying to ask, but I wasn't sure how you guys all.
Yeah, we just say, I think, including water, electric, sewer, and gas customers.
By essentially, X percent of utility customers.
Customers will not experience a disruption of service, right?
Proactive planning.
About infrastructure?
Yes.
Well, we'll talk about that, like, what, what, if I'm a customer, if I'm a citizen, what do I get from proactive planning?
Proactive planning means that, uh, we're going to have the systems.
Okay.
Up to date.
Yeah.
And we are gonna maintain them.
Right?
Hopefully.
Right?
And we're gonna have the equipment to maintain them.
Right.
So that, but that's all taken into account, if they don't experience a disruption of service, it's because we have those systems in place, right? Yeah.
For utilities, but what about roads?
We're just not quite intelligent.
Do you, do you want to, I'm just asking, because, so to do that, right, Mayor, you, to do, to have the resources to keep the, all that infrastructure up to date, right? You can say that, right? And you can say, you know, utility infrastructure will be kept up to date, uh, through, um, through.
Proactive planning.
Yeah, proactive planning, and appropriate rate setting, or something like that.
And I would phrase it a little bit more robustly, I would say, we should commit to, by a certain point, creating a capital improvements program.
Oh, there you go.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah. And that, that's exactly what you're talking about, so the planning, it's setting what priorities, so we're not just off on tangents, replacing random pieces of equipment, or paving random pieces of roads. We have a clear plan on, here's how we wanna move forward, and here's what needs to be addressed first.
Capital, sorry.
Yeah, capital improvements program. Now, what about leasing programs versus own?
So that's a strategy, right? Within the, the crap, the capital improvements plan, there may be some, you know, long-term purchases, or maybe a savings program, or they could be leasing. And those would be strategies that the team would put together and bring back.
You know.
Well, can I say, consider, commit, the city will have?
Yeah.
A, you, and I think we need to say utilities, or is it all, all infrastructure?
That's a good question. So I think we would have a capital improvements program, but I think under that, the utilities would be separated out, because they're, um, but I'd prefer to see it to be one overall.
One plan.
Master plan.
So we can say, the city will have a capital improvements program, is there a program or plan?
I like the word program.
I do, including utilities, streets, roads, what else?
Utilities, streets, roads, uh, buildings.
And buildings, right? Awesome. Mayor, does that get to what you were talking about, that plan?
That's now specifically what buildings, our own buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Would be city.
Yeah, this is everything public, yeah, yeah.
Bridges.
You never know, some of them are like that.
Bridges, yeah.
Oh, no, don't talk about bridges.
Not to so much as we can, but I like, right?
That's a good point, bridges, yeah, there. What about parks?
That's under quality of life, is it?
That it's under, that it's under maintenance too, as well, so that would be under infrastructure.
If our question, are parks infrastructure?
That is a good question.
I think it's a luxury nonsense.
Okay.
Well, that's an interesting, that's a great distinction, the infrastructure we're talking about are essentials, right?
Yeah.
Roads, buildings, et cetera.
Should we put essential on here, to state of essential infrastructure?
Not yet, but not yet, because I think you guys are gonna write a preamble for this, and we can draft that for you. But I think, um, you know, I, I think if we could, let's just go ahead and focus on the results, and then get back to the description, what we need to, because we need to go through all of them, pretty much by midday tomorrow. I know, right? I know. Right, the city will have a capital improvements program, including utilities, streets, roads, bridges, and buildings, that's awesome.
What about IT?
Technology infrastructure, that's actually a sent, that's extremely essential, and I think that's gonna go under good governance, would be like.
Okay.
Well, is it IT a utility? That would be good in there. Winter, electric, sewer, gas, and IT.
When, okay, when you think about IT for the public, what does that include?
The website, and then the services that we provide to them digitally.
Yeah, IT, serve, we provide IT services to the public?
Anyone that we write in the future, we provide, or whatever, something like that, which I don't think we're planning to do this.
I guess a good example would be the public wifi network, we have for our businesses.
Well, that's, that's IT infrastructure.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so in, in that case, I have, I have a question, because you are a good, you manage your own utilities, and electric.
Yeah.
Do you have cybersecurity?
We do.
Okay, so, when you say IT, and if you think cybersecurity, is that infrastructure?
Yes.
Or is that government, and I don't really.
That is interesting.
I would say it's governance. I think it's IT, because it's not only hardware and software, we have to keep it up to date, and it has to.
Are you protecting the city, or the, or the citizens when you have cybersecurity?
Both.
Because if they, if they have access, and they would do go to a digital system to, for permits and all that other stuff. Okay. And which, and I don't know if that's a goal or not, to be able to do the online permitting, all the events, everything through there. Okay. Then we're liable for their information, absolutely.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say is, um, you know, capital expenditure is a very defined thing, so it has to meet a certain dollar value, it has to be depreciable. So like vehicles would be considered capital, um.
Computers, though?
No, computers are not capital.
Interesting.
I know, they used to be.
Their equipment, they're not capital.
But yeah, now they've gotten to the point where the cost for place them is lower than it matters for, for capital.
Okay.
But I'm just trying to think, you're getting me thinking, though, because I think about, um, like our security cameras, which are very expensive, and we have them throughout the building. You probably could make the argument that those might be capital infrastructure, if you, like.
Because your tenants' homes as well.
What about the ones in the community, for the PD, you leave, is that part of a, is that part of a, because they're part of us, so they're, they're camera systems and everything. Like their body worn cameras, that type?
Those are the ones through the town.
Yeah, those are all our IT, that deploys those. Interesting.
I, I just think, because it's a significant expense.
Yeah.
It's, then you have to plan for, for sure.
So if you're a member of the public, right, and I know you are, sorry, uh, and you, you look at the infrastructure plan, um, what would you think of if in, information technology was included in, in the infrastructure program?
Yeah, we are a twenty-first century city.
Good point, but that's enough said. But that we were providing it to the, to the citizens. That's what it implies, a little bit. That we're providing, whatever, all the way through, providing everything to them. These, these are public, uh, public capital improvements, right? You know.
Then, no, I think you would, with that, using that as a witness test, no.
Okay.
But I'm still liking this conversation, because technology may be, this day and age, to Councilmember Oatry's point, I mean, we really don't do much that doesn't have a technological influence, so even, even if we were to go to like smart traffic signals, that type of thing, or, God forbid, red light cams, um, that would make. That is technology that's, you know, part of our infrastructure system.
But you, you know, one thing you could say is, instead of information technology, you could just say technology.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And the other part, because your utility company is all the smart metering, that's going to be coming, those are gonna end up in homes, on meters, at.
We have.
So we have, we do, we have, no, they're all done.
Did they all finish?
Yeah, there's a handful of commercial left to be installed, but we're closing out the contract on the residential home, so smart cities is kind of a growing trend, and I'll give you an example. Some cities put, um, I don't know if their cameras, some kind of sensor on their street sweepers, that as they're sweeping the streets, it'll assess the road condition, and it will report that.
They, they attach it to their street sweepers, to their road graders.
And it gives a report back, yeah, it's to say, okay, this, this road is, you know, classified as.
That's such great technology.
A C, or whatever the grade is, so that, that's where technology can really tie into our infrastructure conversations.
So technology is a really big thing in terms of infrastructure, but not necessarily, information technology is here.
Yeah.
Phones, that kind of stuff, so I think if you say technology, that's, that's really, you know.
Great, we got to.
No, it's added, no, it's added to the.
Oh, okay, got it, the city will have capital improvements program.
Including.
Utility streets, roads, bridges.
Those, those.
Sorry. I, I, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
That is cool.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you.
Okay, so when you, alright, let's, let's keep asking this question, not that you have to add or, or not. When you think about what you want your community to experience over the next two to five years, what do you want infrastructure to do for them?
Yeah.
Let's count someone for the long ones.
Okay, ask him what he wants for infrastructure in the next few years.
Uh, is new here, is.
Uh, it's kind of weird, because it all goes back to quality of life. It's just, it's just so weird, but that's what we want, we want them to have, just seamless, toilets flush, water, safe, safe water to drink, and heat in the homes. That's the top one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, if you say, a disruption of service would be if you had a water event, and you had a smell in the water, and you had to tell people that they couldn't drink it, or that they had to boil, right? That's a disruption. The water still may be available, but if you have a smell event, which happens, you know, that's a disruption, right? So that anytime the utilities aren't usable, right, because electricity is out, or unstable, if the sewer backs up, or, you know, you've got a, a problem with a pump, and, you know, the scanner can't flush their toilets, or whatever, any of those things that change the quality of service are disruptions.
Yeah. And some, some things are beyond our control, if a vehicle hits a, a power pole, you know, that, that's not something we can, you know, have any control.
Unless the wreck can get stuck. Exactly, or a squirrel blows itself up on a transformer, and the people on that block can't be utilising it, which is.
So it's really not a realistic goal, from an electric standpoint, to have a hundred percent electricity. And they say you will not experience a disruption, is setting yourself up for failure. GCE has a percentage, and it's ninety-nine point something.
Right, so this would be a percentage of users.
Yeah.
That do not experience a disruption.
One thing I have to say.
You have to put a percentage.
Yes, you do. You asked for it.
We made some measurable.
Mayor, so we're gonna measure, right?
Okay.
And it can't be a hundred percent, of course, because that's not possible. So let's, let's, that's measurable, let's go down and see if there's a third result that you want your community to experience as a consequence of infrastructure.
Well, here's a question for you all, we're calling it sustainable infrastructure, um, we are putting in turf, for example, at, uh, Central Park. We're looking at some of our medians going to zirescaping instead of natural grass. Do you want, um, an environmental sustainability, uh, component to our, our infrastructure development?
Yes, we do.
So one way to measure that, over time, is the cost of maintaining your infrastructure, and that would be horizontal infrastructure.
It is.
Does the cost of maintaining your horizontal infrastructure go down because of your landscaping strategy, or your, or, or the other thing, you know, so, there's a lot of different ways to pave streets, right?
Uh huh.
There's a lot of ways, different ways to patch them.
Yep.
Right? So, does, you know, and you ask, does, you know, the quality and the cost to measures of your horizontal infrastructure improve over time?
Exactly. A great example of that would be LED light bulbs.
Yes.
Which last for fifteen years.
Yes.
They never do in my house, but yes.
They say they do.
They say.
But they also consume a lot less.
They do, they're, they're awesome, right?
Yeah, that's the question, or, and it's, it's me talking, but it's really you all who should be saying, yes, we want this to be part of the plan or not.
Well, absolutely, but I don't know how to phrase that.
Yeah.
So what you could do is, by a certain date, right, beginning, maybe beginning in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, um, the cost of maintaining our horizontal infrastructure will continue to go down through our conservation and pavement strategies, or something like that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
We're actually starting that, aren't we?
We are.
Yeah.
Some of our street lights are LED now.
Sure, yeah.
Makes a big difference.
What is horizontal infrastructure that should fully cross that?
Streets and roads.
Okay.
Not a.
So we, we should not use horizontal infrastructure, that's not a term that's. The cost of, the cost of maintaining our streets and roads will continue to go down, um, as a consequence of our conservation efforts, something like that.
Horizontal infrastructure typically refers to, you know, anything you lay in the ground or on the ground, that type of thing, and then, when you say vertical infrastructure, that would be buildings.
Okay.
So it's just a, a fancy way to say buildings.
I don't know.
So even if you're conserving our buildings better, how, how is it?
This would be a goal where you're actually beating the rate of inflation.
Yes. Cost of maintaining our streets, has there was, will it increase or go down? Sorry.
Or you can say, will the, will, will, uh, you can, let's, let's say the cost of light bulbs goes up, right? But the cost of energy for those light bulbs goes down, right? I think you can maybe say the cost of maintaining our streets and roads, um, will not increase as a, a consequence of our conservation efforts.
And I would say at the end of the. And I would say at the end of that to preserve resources, to preserve resources.
Well, you talk about human resources as well.
Yeah.
If you don't have to change the light bulbs.
Yeah.
But every 15 years, you're saving all that staff time, all the fuel and equipment that it takes to, you know, get someone up on a bucket to do that.
Are there alternatives to roads up with asphalt, concrete and? Well, there's dirt.
Dirt.
No, but I mean, like it's, sorry, I had to concrete it there. And concrete roads, are they cheaper to maintain than like an actual asphalt road is? Have you seen those up north?
Yeah, it, it's, it's one of those catch things. They're far more expensive to install.
And we already have a place in the season that we're going to prioritize sustainable practices.
I don't think so.
No.
So that's why we tie it to do to our conservation. So one thing Darcy's bringing up. Sorry. One of the things Darcy's bringing up, of course, you're fighting inflation. And what we were hearing from you is zirescaping, you know, long life light bulbs, things like that. Are, are we saying through our conservation and preservation of resources strategies?
I think so, and that's, I think, what Councilor O'Leary was just kind of asking.
I just asked if we had some policy already that we're going to prioritize sustainable practices and practice.
This might cause you to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through conservation and preservation of resources.
That will Darcy.
I know she writes.
She has, she has a hard job in the, in the room.
Seriously, that is a skill on its own.
So one of the older initiatives that you all do is. Well, and, and just thinking about this, like you all have, and we're currently in the second year of it. We've done a sidewalk replacement program where the city will, um, like most cities, which pisses people off. It's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain the sidewalk. We're meeting them halfway over the last couple of years and we put money into a fund that will pay for 50% of the sidewalk repairs. So it's a 50/50 split with the homeowner. To me, that is a great way to work on sustainable.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we could, if you wanted, we could put a statement here, continue, you know, that program and maybe even come up with a, a percentage-ish of sidewalks that we want to have rehabilitated.
That would be a separate item. So you didn't say something like, oh, let's do that one.
I love these things. I always want to like write on one of them and say, hey, call me when you get a chance and leave it on someone's desk.
That's what the little ones are for, right?
I know, that's what I'm doing on a big one. I'll leave it for everybody.
These are great. Our line is that we wish we had, was stock in 3M posted notes about 26 years ago. Because we contribute to their economy.
Steve, why are you, I have, why are you doing that? Why, what is, are you looking for pedestrian friendly sidewalks?
It's part of our, yeah, it's part of our ADA strategies, but it's also just overall beautification of our community. And then also, you know, ensuring that, um, as those sidewalks are replaced, that, I mean, I think there's a million reasons. Public safety, beautification, just visual, I think, as, and quality of life when people drive around and see nicely maintained sidewalks. It makes them feel better. ADA, again, reasons. And I think, you know, to root out future problems as well, because those things only get worse as, as time goes on.
Sure do. And the cost of the sidewalks are expensive. I know mine is 12,000 for replacement.
Very expensive.
And there's, there's no way, I can just try to check, be like, oh. You know, it's a, it helps a lot of, a lot of the homeowners to be able to say, hey, you know what? I actually can get something nice in front of my house.
Yeah.
And they can actually finally afford it.
Yeah, okay.
So do you have an inventory of how many blocks of sidewalks need to be replaced?
I think our public works department does have something.
Okay.
Because we've even had some people that have pulled them out completely because they were so broken. Now it's just one piece of grass all the way across, so it goes sidewalk and then somebody in front of their house has no sidewalk.
Some people put gravel.
Yeah, some people just pour gravel up. And that's how they, it's not. No, because it's not the way it's supposed to be. But they're doing what they can because if it wasn't what they can pull.
Gravel's not ADA at all.
It's actually not legal for them to just tear out the sidewalk and then put in a dirt path or, or turn it back to grass, but we're also not enforcing that.
Who, that's a cool thing. Who owns the sidewalks?
There's a, you own, in most cases, not all cases, but the city owned, but it is the homeowner's responsibility to, to maintain them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the city have the, I'm sorry, do I, does the city have the obligation to maintain downtown?
Yeah, there are some public areas that it is our, our job to maintain them.
But not in the residential.
Not in the residential, right?
We're, it's our responsibility, we have to keep them up. And it's just one that's hard.
If you can afford half.
Probably not. There's far more sidewalk issues than, you know, in fact, the first year of the program, the funding ran out within the first month, I believe, in applications.
That's like the amount each year you allocate and run that at the time.
Exactly.
Unless we work on something that could fund it, you know, at the long term, that would actually just go to that program. And then maybe take it quadrant by quadrant and just.
Yeah.
As a long-term goal.
When I worked with Long Beach, right, they had a replacement plan, a three-year stage, you know, you know, these seven blocks are going to be in year two and these 20 blocks are going to be in year three. So they had, they had really kind of scheduled it out. And then, you know, council members go, well, I want my blocks in year one, right? Kind of interesting. And so they started horse trading about whose, whose sidewalks get to be replaced first.
Yeah.
So that can happen and that's a pretty good thing, actually. So if you have a planner, if, if public works has a schedule or has identified, not a schedule, but has identified, you know, the blocks in the city that need to have, have been identified as needing sidewalk replacements. What you can say is, I'm gonna make this up, right, like 2027, you know, 100% or 90% of identified, um, sidewalk blocks will be replaced.
Exactly.
And then you work toward that.
Yeah, because one of the things we had said before was we want walkability, right, from the neighborhood, sort of town. We do think that right now it's just not, you have to go off to the street, back on and off.
Not good.
And it's just, and that's in the residentials.
So one thing you can do is you can add language on the front end of this, right? By such as yesterday, uh, and instead of, we usually begin with a percentage, but you could say something like that. To enhance public safety and ne- and neighborhood beautification, X% of identified sidewalk blocks will be replaced by X year.
Yeah. And we could maybe do that, maybe we can initiate that for a bond initiative or maybe a tax increase on, on something, maybe a specific tax on, on survey bid or service or something. And just have that fund that.
Yeah.
I don't know if the voters would push that through, but they might if they're going to get a benefit from it.
And if you, if, if you continue to rely on homeowners to fund half of it, what you might do is you might say, not 100%, you might say 70% will be achieved, you know, over the next five years or something like that. Depending on what you think you can accomplish, but here today, you don't have to fill in the percentages or the dates because the plan without the numbers in it will go to you, Steve. And then you and your team make recommendations to the council group about what those dates and numbers should be.
I just did a quick scan, I started doing, the community feedback didn't mention sidewalks at all.
Yeah.
But they did talk about public safety and, um, uh, beautification, like appearance.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I didn't, public safety and I wrote it twice. A neighborhood, public safety, public safety, neighborhood, I think is a, is a, like, you'll have to read appearance. They, they do talk about that.
That is an interesting point, Darcy, because no one has mentioned alleys either. And we have some alleys that are in atrocious shape. And some, some cities do similar to like these sidewalk programs, they'll do alley programs. We'll take a certain number of alleys each year and either pave them or refinish them or create them or clear out the trees.
Page 61 of the thing says infrastructure sidewalks.
And that was the community.
That was community.
Okay, great, right here.
Good, I'm glad it's in there.
Yeah, me too.
It was, it was the only item under infrastructure mentioned by the community.
Okay, sorry, I was.
That's all right. I went to look because I was remembering it as staff, but it's actually the community that mentioned sidewalks.
What page is it on?
61.
No, it's the little number, just 61.
Oh, oh, it's, no, it's slide number 61.
Slide number 61.
31, okay, got it, that's, thank you.
Yeah, I think we have an ordinance for the alleys.
Yeah, in terms of vegetation and property owners' responsibilities, but the surface on it is entirely us.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So I think what, what we must say, percentage of sidewalk blocks, because you're talking about a, a block, a sidewalk block, is all the sidewalks on a particular block. And for a square block, there'd be four sidewalk blocks.
It is interesting to have it like this because sidewalks is the only.
Yeah, right.
Bulletproof for, for, for. That's fascinating.
They didn't talk about water, then you're talking about streets, then you talked about, you know, any of that other stuff.
Yeah.
And you talked about sidewalks. Really interesting.
That's the first thing you see when you go into a neighborhood.
Yeah.
Because I know like in, in my block, I have mine, and then across the street it's half sidewalk and then it's gone, like completely gone. So curbs gone, everything's gone. Because our stuff was removed years ago because I had a curb and it was like that and then the curbing gutters, it's called, right? Had that and then that was removed by a business on that street. So to open up a traffic hole.
It's, it's a great issue, really important issue for anyone with a disability.
It is.
Anyone who's older, right?
Kids.
Kids, riding their bikes. It's, it's hurts everybody.
Yeah, kind of what I'm interested in, whoever.
So the way it reduces by X day to enhance public safety and neighborhood appearance, X% of sidewalk blocks will be replaced.
So we have nothing specific about roads yet.
We do not.
Is the point. Mammy.
What are your issues around roads?
So, uh, one of the biggest issues on our residential roads is we've, instead of milling them down and putting new surface on over the years, we've just overlaid. So we have a lot of our residential roads where the, the road base is now encroaching on the required curb height. In fact, it causes a lot of vehicles to bottom out coming out of alleys. So there is some tangible things that are happening because of that. A lot of them just need to be completely ground down. Although I would say in general, the surfaces as they exist now are not in horrible shape. So it's not like we need to, we do have some that we experience a lot of crackage and, and potholes and those do need to be addressed. But as far as our, our residential roads and most of our major roads, they're in reasonable shape. But that's a question, do we want to address roads at all in the next five years?
Well, we, we said that they're, they would be part of a capital improvements program. So that means that we would be looking at.
That's true.
We tried to look at, not as a goal of having them just fixed, we're getting the, the tools that we need to truly fix them in-house.
So maybe that's enough for now, because that would cause us to prioritize, you know, our road, um, conditions and requirements in that capital improvements program.
It would, and it would, because you have the technology to give your, each street or road a grade. You know, you can.
Oh, I wish we had that technology.
Oh, you don't.
I think we have, we don't have the mill. Our hot plan's gone too.
Never mind.
Well, and there's another, you know, issue, condition that exists in Trinidad that you need because some of our streets are brick and they're mending.
That's a good point, Steve, that's a good point.
That's, and that'd be a different grade, that'd be a different assessment.
Yes.
Are the bricks downtown air locking? What are they sitting on?
Sand. And then they, if they come out, it just breaks down.
Yeah. And they, it's rare they do, so it's a concrete base and then, and they're setting sand.
They're remarkably stable.
They are, they are.
Well, first you, we, we just did, first you, the city did. Now, maintenance and replacement of those are a whole different.
That's true.
When they show up.
And they cause issues with snow plowing.
Right, because they have to use a rubber plate.
They're slick with RIC though.
Do we have, do we have to please state any specific?
For bricks, I don't think so.
That would be in your program.
That San Pedro's a front street to go down.
Yeah, it's like right now.
So a big one that you all might want to consider is, um, we now have negotiated our final orders with the Department of Justice for ADA improvements that are required. And we have a deadline of September 2025 to get those done. Is that something that you all want specifically to have in our current strategic plan?
We almost have to do it.
I think it'd be very important for us to put it in the plan as a focus area.
How, what percentage are we complete?
So, yeah, there's, there was two different schedules. They basically chopped down the amount of work we have to do to get us to the end date. But that's by no means to say that we're done with ADA after.
Well, sure.
That time ends. So as it stands now on the revised orders, I would say we're. Just in the planning phase, I'm making sure we get those improvements done. So Marvin and Darcy, does it have to be a percentage or could we just say complete the ADA mandate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's.
It's like, it's like a benchmark.
Yes.
Do we want to add in there, but continue, continue our ADA compliance? Because we have to continue, we have to keep up with it, right?
That's part of.
So that's just that one piece.
I think just this one piece as far as the plan goes.
Okay.
So Steve, will we have, will we be on a watch list or anything after that?
No.
They'll go off the watch.
We'll go off the watch list. What would happen is, um, that transition plan we talked about earlier, in the next year, we need to make sure we get cracking on that.
Okay.
But then we go back to being like every other city where we're subject to a lawsuit that we may have to pay a claim on. And without that transition plan, there's a likelihood that the DOJ would come back and say, hey, we're taking over because they're not planning anything.
And that would be like, oof.
Yeah.
That would be a really, yeah, big.
Yeah.
Because that's really impacted our community.
Yeah. So, and Mammy, really to answer your question is, all of these ADA concerns are prescribed by law. So, um, saying and continue to do that would, you know, like saying and continue to follow the law.
Oh, well, the, the way I would say, like, as they come up, are we going to encourage the commitment to continue, to stay on top of them versus?
Yeah, we will absolutely.
Let them go.
But just to bring it another way, under quality of life, though, you may have a specific goal to develop a playground that's accessible to children. So that'd be a very specific thing to.
I got you.
Yeah.
So can we say something in there that, um, the community can relate to?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I said, I'm thinking out loud, right, the city will complete the, we should, we should write it out.
Yeah.
We should.
Oh, I was just going to suggest add to the end of it, to continuing, or, or, I don't write it yet, but, to continue enhancing opportunities, you know, for access to the community, something like that.
Accessibility.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, so the, so, you know, somebody may not understand what this means, right?
Right.
But if you, if you say Americans with Disabilities Act, you spell it out, mandated, right, to improve accessibility, is it downtown or throughout the city?
Uh, throughout the city.
Throughout the city.
True, I would say to improve citywide accessibility. I would say to improve citywide accessibility.
Okay, great.
Sorry, Darcy, you're trying to write.
That's how this is.
This is not unusual.
I'm completely lazy over here.
And I apologize, I do have to go for today, but I feel like you all are incapable.
So for, so for infrastructure, you have. Five. Five. That's plenty.
Okay.
Because you'd have four of these, right? So if you start thinking ahead a little bit, it's a process, right? So you want to have the things that are most important, but if you overburn, if you put too many things in the plan, it makes it difficult to accomplish.
Yes.
Because you're going to get spread too thin. You're not there, but that's just something you'll watch over time. And again, each of these can have a different date or a different percentage. And Steve, working with his team, will develop, you know, what their recommendations are for the dates and the percentages, how much by when, and that will come back to you as you improve, you know, completely, ratify the fight.
It makes sense to keep them all reaching.
It sure does.
Exactly, right, yeah, we have to be reasonable and.
They can be stretchy, but not unachievable. It's really important.
Well, and the good example of that is A D A. In twenty fifteen, we committed to improvements that there's no possible way we could achieve them. And so that caused us a lot of problems coming to the end of our orders. So we want to make sure when we are looking back five years from now, that we've done as much as we've, we've said we were going to do. I'll leave on that note. Thank you, guys.
Good luck in whatever you're going to be doing.
Thank you.
Here.
Or on it?
Yeah. Let's go to economic vitality.
Where's our other shit? Oh, there it is.
Let's just talk about it. So when you think about the economy, I know this included tourism, right? What else is in there?
The professionals.
Professionals. Professionals.
So I'm, I'm thinking when we talk, what's, what I, what I heard in everybody's comments, lack of artisan craftsman.
Yes.
So part of that, in my mind, would be to develop the partnership between ourselves and the college to initiate a program to train artisan contractors. There's a semi-program like that already in effect. It's not artisans, it's just hand工人.
I see.
But I think if we work together, that, that, at one point Trinidad had a very vibrant building trades.
I was hoping. Everybody needed trade school, right?
My house was built by the trade school.
Welders, plumbers, electricians.
Right.
Mechanics.
Is that something that's attainable?
To sit at the table with them, I mean.
Karen, you're still on the council for the college. Is there any way that can be accomplished, do you believe?
It's all dependent on the funding that the college gets, and so, and I'm. What's going through my mind right now is that I think it's really important that we talk about economic vitality, that we think about what we're capable of doing, what we have power over, and what we don't have power over. Because we can't measure something that we're committing.
Right.
Somebody else to do. So, I mean, some of the things we've got to look to the private sector to do, because that's its role, is to do those things.
One thing you could do is start working with our partners. That could be the unions, that could be the school, that could be your developers, that could be high school, it could be kind of anybody, working with our partners. Then you have to kind of count this, right? The number of, however you say it, professional, or the trades professionals, living in and active in the community, increase by whatever. And I put that like out there, you know, I think Steve will put that out like five years. All right? So that means if you have one plumber today, you want, well, many, or three, four, you know, five years, or if you have two carpenters, can you double that to four?
What kind of, like this, doesn't that, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, sometimes it doesn't make any sense to me, because if there's a huge demand for plumbers, you would think we would have a lot of plumbers.
Well, I think so.
The problem is, people don't have money to pay plumbers, and so if they, if they were working for a living wage, they wouldn't have money to pay plumbers, and the plumbers that are in demand would be here.
That's true, but it's also true that if you were building houses, you'd have plumbers here, because there'd be work.
And I would also say, and it's also true that even if you could pay them three hundred dollars an hour, you still might not have plumbers, because that's what's happening in our area. We have building happening, we have two plumbers, and they can't, you know, I'm exaggerating a little bit, can't keep up with the demand. Because whoever's paying the most gets a plumber. So, you know, I don't, women gets the best, can't get paid. I saw something today online about how Generation Z, which I think is like kids that are coming of age now, that they're going into trades more often.
Absolutely.
So maybe that is, by working with our partners, we find a way to support that, that interest, because they're learning that going to college isn't necessarily going to result in they're making the money that they really want to make by living in a trade, they will. So maybe you just have to.
That kind of falls under economic development as well, because if you have somebody in economic development, seeing that we have a need in our area, they're able to reach out to the larger names and say, hey, you know, we looked at Trinidad, and Mark doesn't sell us. You know, and same thing to the electrician, because they don't look down this direction until somebody, until somebody reaches them and says, you've got a need, this is how, and they give them numbers. And that's the key, if they give them numbers, you're like, we'll set up a remote, we see what it does, and then possibly actually gaming that service.
Right.
Because I know trying to develop the trades at the school, that's going to be hard unless they can find the funding.
And the, and the interest has to be there. So we have this, right now we have this program that the A G's department or the A G's office has money that we put towards rehabilitating houses in Trinidad.
The A G does?
Yes, it's a long story. Right.
Wow, Mr. Weiser, how interesting is that?
The problem is that this program is present in the college, and high school kids can do it, anyone can do it. You're basically paid to go to college to take this class, you get the tools that you need or part of it, and they have a hard time getting people to go to take the class. And you would think there'd be a million people that, yes, I want those skills, but I don't know whether it's just that they don't understand them, or I don't know.
I think it falls down to communication once again, because we went to the strategic plan for college, communication was their thing as well. How do you get the word out? We, it's, and I know Karen, I've, I've said this before, and it's not horrible, but it almost sounds like in our community, there's an exclusive email list, and it just kind of goes out to certain people, but they're through each group. It's the people they know, they send it out, and they, and with all hopes that it gets read forward, you know, and most of the time it just stays on that little group, that little group there, and it doesn't reach the community the way that it's supposed to. Because we want it out there, but I don't think that intention actually gets it to where it needs to.
Are there job postings in the local newspaper?
Very little.
Very little.
Most of the time, nobody, indeed, no. I mean, even western, I mean, nobody.
Right.
In my spell, that's, that's, I put it on.
We have an office, a workforce, and a, what really hurt too is the state out of program, small business development centers that work through the college to help kind of facilitate this, and I don't think that's a work in progress anymore.
We're a part of Eastern Colorado's S P V, and it's administered out of, I think, University of Northern Colorado.
Gladler or something.
Something really, we can say. But anyways, but it seems like to me, if we did work with our partners, say, at the high school and say, if you could set up a class that your high school kids could sign up for and allow them to go over and get credit in high school, credit in college, it would, it seems like that would be an easy way to populate those classes, and then you would have a sustainable service.
Well, I've, I've heard demand, I've heard homeowners in the meeting say that they could not get, you know, professionals to renovate or fix their house.
Yeah, because we have, there's no, I don't, do we even have a mason left? I think there's just one left. So like, and a lot of the houses are heated with, 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 with.
Yes.
Chimneys, yes, chimneys made a brick. I'm sorry.
So you hit.
You find a place, thank you.
There's one brick mason.
Yeah, so for the community. And it's like, how do you find that? We even have codes on that, if our chimneys start to crack, that really is about being.
So, something to think about before we're thinking, I haven't heard this in all today, so, which, all the others are a little unusual as well. You know, air source heat pumps and electrifying heat sources is where there's going to be incredible amount of financial incentives, like state funding. It's already happening. Tri-State is, is going to be giving out, and I know you're not Tri-State anymore, but the electric companies, utilities are going to be giving out money to transition homes that are heated by oil, gas, or coal, or wood, to transition to this air source heat pumps, because they use very, very little electricity, the costs go way down, they're going to be doing ongoing refinancing. The trouble that we're having in our community is we're already prepared for that, the town in Christview passed codes, it's a hundred, any new home has to be a hundred percent electrification. You can't have, you can't have oil or gas for your heat source. They have to have an air source heat pump. We don't have the electricians available specializing in that technology, we have current in the right town, and so there's a whole incentive happening for that. But because this is a, if, you know who's using this the most, is our affordable housing, saving our, our, our low-income population incredible amounts of money, it'll save everyone money long-term. And if you have people heating with brick fireplaces still, instead of replacing that fireplace, putting an air source heat pump, it'll save them so much money, and, and you can get funding for it, there's state funding for it. So I would say, as you're thinking about the economic vitality, it's, it's, people are doing it for environmental reasons, but it's really an economic reason, and it's, and it makes sense now, and that's why it's fine. So you need to have the professionals to bring your housing stock into the twenty-first century, and that would be electricians that can run air source heaters. I, I know that sounds crazy, and it might, it may be something you've never heard of, but it is absolutely like, it's coming. It, I, I think the county has some programs that are in line with what you're talking about, and someone met with me last week who's here in Trinidad, who's trying to help people understand what grants are available, and I think he said, uh, yes, with me, there's some program to make sure. I mean, I think it's really leveraging all of the resources, not just what the city can do, but what can you leverage on state, state funding, county funding, from the electric utility funding. Is it C P A S and C O P A S? Is that what you're talking about? Well, that is a program. That's a program, okay. And I can't remember, that might be a state program. One, yeah, C O P A S is, and C P A S is.
So back to this.
Okay.
Right? So back to this, working with our partners, the number of trades, fresh living, working in Trinidad, will increase by X.
I don't like that.
I don't like that.
I don't like it.
Okay.
After I thought about it.
Okay, Karen, what, what would you like to change?
I don't know.
You don't like it?
I don't like it, because I don't think it, I don't, I don't think it's attainable. I, I mean, it's not under our direct control, and I think we're, we're setting ourselves to failure.
It is not under control. Almost nothing is under control, but the question is, can you influence that? I'm not sure you can.
I don't think, I mean, we can try, but I, I don't think we would be successful. It's a great idea, I'd love for it to come to fruition, but I don't think we have the tools to.
Okay, all right.
We need somebody dedicated to just trying to pull that in, because I would think, I mean, we should just go with the development of an economic development under that, under that, contributing to economic vitality.
All right, so let's set this aside for now.
Yeah. Let's say, yeah.
So earlier, you talked about, so, constantly, where you were talking about the creation of an economic development strategy and plan.
Yes.
Right?
Let's do that. I wish Steve was here, because I don't think we have an E D.
We don't, and I think one of the things that Chris was putting that on staff, that we can help foster, maybe at work, breaking it off into the way it used to be, you remember how we had economic development, but it was a collaboration, and that helped, because we funded it, we funded half, county funded half, the state funded, so it was able to be, to try.
A long ago.
Ah, that's been, how long have I been?
I don't know.
Uh, probably about, it's been about ten years.
Okay, because it's before my time.
Isn't getting an E D part of the reason Steve was looking at the budget and trying to find where we might pay for staffing for that? I thought that was one of the reasons.
Because I think if we do it this way, it's more, if we can create it to be more grant driven, they, I don't know how to put this, but it makes me a lot more hungry to go out there and generate more funding.
Just like Kevin mentioned, right?
Yeah, so if we can get that direction going, maybe we can, it, it's an incentive for them to go out and bring in.
We're talking about paying them for the amount of grants that come in? It's compensated by percentage of grants?
So.
I didn't think of that.
It's a strategy.
So the. No, but I mean, fund to a portion, but they can fund their programs by, by grant, that keeps them thriving.
Right, and that's a strategy, right? The result here might be the city will create an economic development strategy and plan to generate economic growth.
That's more, it's not as abstract as.
And the plan would include how you're going to measure it.
Eventually, I'd love to see a partner again the way that it did, because it was well-funded.
So a question, I, I know that in the conversation, so it was a conversation I had, maybe with Steve, about economic development, going out of the city and into a regional entity. Is that where you're going?
Excuse me?
It's a possibility, I think, right now, even though here, I don't know if that came, if this came up in any of the meetings that you had, but it's a penalty that the county and the city don't get along, and that's not true. We just don't have any commonality with certain issues. I mean, our issues aren't theirs and vice versa.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, you know, okay, so the city might not have the money to do a full-time E D.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, but maybe the city with the county can come together and work together for economic development, and I think that's way more attainable.
Does the county have an economic development?
No, I don't believe it.
Now, as far as I know right now. Now, as far as I know right now, they don't have, they don't have the funding. But I think if we can negotiate something with them to be budgeted in, in the future and then possibly at that point, we can look with, you know, let the governors avoid it and see what they have with programs.
Or maybe go in together to give grant money for a position for the county.
It's always an irony to me that organizations don't have the tax revenues that they need and they don't have an economic development strategy to create more businesses and generate more cash.
So it's been strange to me too, that the county and the city kind of treat each other like a donut and a hole without realizing the donut hole is part of the donut.
Without a hole, there's no donut. And you're talking about a Bismarck.
I don't know what I'm like. So I reckon that'll be the life, is there a, because we are the county's seed.
Well, you're all member, you're all residents of the county.
Right.
And the county does business in the city.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, we provide all the services that they utilize.
And of course.
It would be great if it would be successful, but then it, the secondary purpose, I believe of this would be to express to people in the county and in the city that these two entities can come together.
Yeah.
And that in itself would be, um, success, a success in itself.
One thing you could do, right, we use this language up here with our partners. Um, you can leave it for now. Let's, let's have Steve in the room.
Okay.
And talk about this. But if you wanted to really build a plan, a strategy and plan, in conjunction with other towns or the county, you could add, you know, working with our partners.
Right here.
No, not really. Let's hold off. What, what I'm suggesting is, we talk about that when Steve's in the room. Is, is the plan to be developed with your partners or just for the city? If it's a more regional plan, you could add that at the beginning, working with our partners, the city will create. If it's not, then don't put it in there. If it's not, if the strategy is not, don't develop.
It has a much better chance of succeeding if it's with.
Yes.
It's a county.
Okay. Well, let's write it in there and see what sticks.
Because I don't think, regional would be too hard, I think, honestly. If you start bringing in where, you're starting to look at another economic interest. And, and it's going to be too overwhelming upon one entity and one, or one person, hopefully not one person, but that would be just too much strain on to develop where, County Las Vegas, County City of Trinidad, City of Walsingham. So that's on lock.
First, the county here also was in charge of the airport. And so we don't really have any relationship with the airport than services are seen. But that would be, you know, a big deal for bringing the developers and businesses to have a, a very workable airport.
Council member, who, whose airport is?
It's the county's.
Okay.
It's all Trinidad airport.
What, you said, why don't we add that language, working with our partners, the city will create? Uh, and then we can discuss that further when Steve's in the room.
We'll just remember.
I'll remember. I better remember. If I don't, Darcy will.
Well, and you know, I think we're fine-tuning this a little bit. You were talking regional. This, the, the plan doesn't have to, it can be your plan for the city with partners, but you don't have to plan for the region or outside of the city.
That's right.
You know, but you do need to involve the partners in your plan.
And your partners could include the business committee here? Should, would?
Yeah.
Okay. So what you're indicating is this is going to be a collaborative process?
Yes.
Awesome.
Because we all commit, I think the entire community can benefit from grant, some type of grant writers. I believe, I don't know why you have a shit, but grant writers. Then the county, everyone's like kind of contracting piecemeal. So there's some kind of steady influx of grant writing and grant execution. And I think maybe you talked about, we've been talking about, you know, having, having the, a director, a marketing director, a grant writer and a grant executor on staff, and that would, that's like a powerhouse.
That's a powerhouse.
And that's, that's hopefully the dream that we can ever accomplish that. You know, and that would be great. And if we could, I think we could be, we could be older to be able to do that. Because we wouldn't have to worry because we'd have the grant funding coming in. We have the support of local businesses to keep that sustained. Um, advertisement money coming in, possible revolving low-income business incubators all over again. And just bringing that back into our community to keep those small little things going. And if we can be the incubator to grow things even bigger, people are going to look back when they get to Denver and they have that multimillion dollar corporation and realize, remember, they started here in our local community, one of our offices. Or they can come here and operate a satellite at much lower cost. Land is cheaper here. Everything is less expensive here than ever was in the past.
I remember that being, maybe it was you also who said that about, you know, so much easier, so much less expensive to operate if the workforce is here, right?
That's a question.
But the other thing is, if you say, and this is the reason I was asking about posting jobs, right? You post a job and somebody might just take you up on it and come here to live to do it. You know, if somebody comes in and says, well, we're going to open this hall center and we got twenty, twenty-some slots. Well, they don't come in here with twenty people. They come in here to recruit. And that might bring people to come here and go in as well.
Well, I know some of the, the other organizations in town, um, there was a bunch of local accounts. Applications from Louisiana, New York, Alabama, I mean, all over the country. And just looking at the city and thinking this was a beautiful place to give it a try.
Yeah.
And they wanted to relocate there. And that's, that's a great thing.
Well, that would. And that were great people here. People will go to where the work is.
There's a, something we haven't even brought up, which is that we just were approved as an emergent campus, like a school area in the city. Trinidad just was approved for that. So we have, there's a place for it. The, um, college and the school district are working together early in the mid- fall. Typically, it brings tech-type people to a city, and that's what is going to happen.
Council member, what kind, what kind of campus?
On the emergent campus.
Emergent campus.
There's a model for it. It's up in Florence or Canyon City, I remember Florence. They had a, an unused school building that they transformed into a site that businesses could do startups. And primarily the businesses that have come to do that have been IT-related kinds of industries. But it's going really, really well and it's transforming Florence. Um, and so we've just received a huge amount of money to put this together for Trinidad. So it's something that the city needs to be aware of and figure out how to bring it in in this economic development.
Is that Florence, Colorado or Florence, Arizona?
Florence, Colorado.
Okay.
So maybe when you were talking about partnering with a college, that might not be so far-fetched.
Right.
Because of the emergent campus.
That's true.
That's really interesting.
Okay.
Council's taking notes. That's right.
Yeah.
So what about tourism?
Well.
The big one.
We put under their authentic tourism.
I wrote authentic just to remind you.
Of course, of course.
So this is where I have issues. Because it was mentioned about restaurants being closed, um, at odd times. And I am very reluctant as a, as an elected official to tell somebody how to run their business. Can't. So how, how can we affect a change?
Well, if there are more customers, they'll stay open.
Right.
Demand drives business.
If they have the workforce.
If they have the workforce.
But what drives the workforce? Jobs.
Yeah.
Right? And what drives jobs is business.
What I've seen too here in Trinidad is that the restaurants that survive and thrive are the ones who make a decision, we're open every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's tough. They went through years of trouble, but then they've, they've made their way.
And we see that everywhere. You know, restaurants that are open some hours and some hours not. Forget about it. They're not serious about it and people can't, can't keep up. When are you open? Well, there are a lot of restaurants here that don't stay open very much. So there's almost nothing open outside.
I think, yeah, so like six o'clock, everything's just shutting down. They're not busy. I know they all close.
There are a lot of them that you can count.
But it's not a, how can we change it?
We need a stronger chamber, someone that's going to go, that, we have a good chamber growing. I don't want to say that we haven't. It's growing and developing. But one of the things I'd love to see our chamber do is start doing leadership and teaching these business owners, you know, going in, not telling them what to do. Show them how to lead their business, how to, how to prosper. Go through and say, you know, maybe Monday's not your best day to be closed, you know, just a little advice. Why don't you close on Wednesday? Statistically, that's the slowest day in the restaurant business. So Wednesday's the better day to be closed. Stay open on Monday. See how that works for you. You know, and kind of just kind of giving those, that guidance in there and, and pushing them to succeed. Instead of just going through and letting them feel like they're in the weeds too, because they're just like, well, we're just struggling.
Well, one way to measure tourism is the percentage of jobs that are supported by tourism revenues. Uh, that's one thing that's measured in the Gansan now. Number or percentage of jobs that are supported by tourism dollars. Another way to think about that is the, um, amount of tourism dollars that are spent in the city. Right? So you don't know that right now, probably.
No.
Right? That's okay. It's okay that you don't. You should. And if tourism really becomes a real thing that you're focused on, you're going to find that out. And someone will do a study for you. We've got a guy that does that, on our company, by somebody else. Um, but to measure tourism, and, and hotels know this, right? You're measuring, you know, the, the number of dollars that are spent in this community by tourists, whether they're coming here to bike. If they're, if they don't live here, they're tourists, basically. Right? So that's oftentimes how, um, tourism is measured. Um, you know, number of jobs supported by tourism dollars or the number of, you know, the money that's spent. You know, when this bridge closed in, in Gansan, the, the dollars that come into the community, that are spent in the community, you know, by tourists coming to Kirikani, you know, are, are measured. I mean, it's a million dollars or something like that.
So you're helping us along here and I really appreciate it.
Well, I'm more facilitating.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
Okay.
So maybe our first step in the tourism's, uh, plan would be to start a procedure on how to measure.
Yes. That's right. That could be part of your economic development.
Yes, to measure the impact of tourism. And I don't know if, see, we know what lobbying impacts does.
Of course you do.
I don't know.
And you know those numbers.
I know, we know those.
But that's, that's only one aspect of, of what is spent here, because that's what you're taxing.
Right.
You know, if you're taxing, you know, every meal that's bought by tourism, don't doubt that. But then, so there's a lot of other things that they spend, right? Bikes and bike repairs and bars and restaurants and, you know, all kinds of crazy things that bikers do. It's like this, you know? But there are clear models that you can use to calculate the dollars that are spent by tourists.
Doesn't CTO keep track of that stuff? I mean, I would think the car tourism office would just keep track of that and that they would already have some kind of system.
They may. Correct. They may.
I, I think a central problem with tourism in Trinidad is this. Tourism, if you think about it, should be driven, should be driven by the, the private sector. By the guy who runs the alligator farm or whatever, the thing that's drawing people to come. But what's happened in Trinidad is that, like someone reflected in some comment in here, that there's an over-reliance on the city to drive tourism, the city to support tourism. And I think the city should respect tourism, should be supportive of it, not get in the way of it, be helpful, help fund it. But I think it should be primarily a private.
Sector.
Sector.
But that, one, one way that we can help that is by making sure that their experience, as far as what the city is responsible for, be top-notch. I'm talking about downtown, um, Kerbit Pila downtown.
Right. The things that we can affect.
Yes.
So you can do things, right? You, you also are responsible for developing the marketing plan for the communities.
We're, we're doing that.
Right. So you have a lot of influence over it, right? But you're right, you know, you can, however you want to, you know, say that. You could also just, in terms of measurement, right? You could, you could add a note here, generate economic, how to generate economic growth, including measuring the impact of tourism.
Yes.
And just write it in there. Says that's going to be part of your plan to start those measurements. So.
And, and I think by doing that, we would learn how we can best support tourism. I think we do it a lot of times, it's like, well, let's help put this festival on. And we don't have the data supporting what we need to, to say that was a worthwhile investment. But we should have that data in place and we can explain it to our stakeholders.
Right. And we heard from different people that there have been some festivals that have gone away.
Right. Because the private sector decided not to do it anymore. I mean, that's, that's what, what it will.
And they blamed you, right? Maybe incorrectly. They blamed you because you didn't provide enough financial support. And your position was, well, they need to be self-sufficient.
And/or ask.
That would be terrible.
Yeah. They're a private organization. It's just like a business. You take that risk and you open it up, you see, if you can't sustain it, then it's.
However, you could make a policy, direction, a decision that you will, you will support the organizations that have, that hold festivals here.
But.
For how? Of course.
But I'm not 100% convinced that festivals draw businesses.
Okay.
Because I get a lot of complaints from downtown.
Closing streets, that kind of thing.
Well, we do generate sales tax from the, the festivals because all the vendors are supposed to have the sales tax.
Okay.
So they're supposed to. And that's one thing you need to make sure.
We talk, I think, maybe an attainable goal would be, I'm always thinking, how much really do festivals contribute? I mean, I think it's more of a quality of life. It's for certain people to celebrate downtown.
Yeah.
But.
Builds community.
Yeah, builds community. But instead of, instead of having them downtown, why don't we do a facility that can host festivals? That is a win-win, win for the local merchants and win for people that want to come to the festival.
I would love for us to have a festival district. Just go to and find an area of parks.
We will eventually.
All designated to have that there.
We will.
As far as the River Hall.
Yeah, well, yeah. To mean of course, we have plans to expand to have it similar to an Amity where you can have festivals.
Because in our community, we have found that they don't, they don't want the impediment of the traffic down. So it would be in our best interest to bring those down to where we are beautiful, where we do have that. We have, downtown's beautiful, don't get me wrong, but that nature and that highways, that scenery, when people drive by, they're like, oh, cool, you have carnage. You know, and people do feel off to see that.
Well, I know schools.
And we're getting off the subject, but when you're talking about sales tax. So your vendors who are selling beer are taking money away from the people that have drinking water bars.
For what money?
Well, unless the, the bars, the whole, you know, have the.
Well, they're going to, they're going to make their money too, but, you know, I.
I think they're fair questions and I think we should ask them honestly and, and make decisions based on good information.
Yes.
Well, as in festivals, you could provide some preference for local, you know, businesses to have first dibs on, you know, the vendor spots.
All the, the spending chamber is going to be, this event coming up Saturday will be a good test.
Yeah, this is the biggest we've ever been, so we're at thirty, thirty-nine to forty vendors, five blue trucks.
Wow.
And then we have the dads, and the beard running the car show. So this is really, really a test of, of something larger.
Where in the area are you from there?
Downtown.
Downtown.
Downtown, alright.
And what I'd like to see is the chamber to help people understand how you can operate that to benefit your business, because they just shut, if there's a festival on one side of the road, they just shut the doors, and they're like, let us sign up and say, we are also celebrating.
It's good man, we have a food special now.
Right.
The brewery has their, you know, their store open, and they also have a vendor, you know, they also have cakes down the street. I mean, I don't understand how you can't make money on a festival, I don't get that.
I don't understand.
Or you don't open your door, it's really hard to make.
It's really hard to make money. You know, what you do is, you know, you push people into the downtown on foot. This is not brain surgery.
Amazing.
And that's where the hard thing is, our merchants downtown, there's a, there's a small majority that do not want that, that with traffic.
Well, if you're a restaurateur, if you're a festival planner, help you. But if you're a bar, or you're selling, you know, art, how can a festival not enhance you?
Well, I think the question is, do festivals truly attract tourists and locals? Is it a local thing? Is it stopping tourists from, you know, it's a question we have to ask. And trust me, I'm not, and I'm just wondering.
Well, and that's what I say, this is a massive experience, experiment, because we did, we have contacted all three new stations to come down, to come and take a look, broadcast, and show, and see if we can start getting hits on it. You know, if they do, then maybe somebody from the public will come down and want to see it, you know. We've also marketed out in my tone, and say, how, if you guys are doing yours, we'll talk to us. You know, vice versa, our people, we encourage them, go, go over there, check out the chihuahua race. You know, that's one thing we're missing, we don't know how to get that yet, but we'll get, we'll have a chihuahua race next year.
I would love to see that.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do, is just trying to get it out there, that true that exists. There is a whole level of state that exists under public. And, and I think that's what we need to do all the way across, is figure that marketing, by, you know, using economic development with the tourism, all the way across, showing that we exist down here, and we have some cool stuff to sell, you know.
Well, okay.
Alright, we got, we got, sorry.
Festivals are a strategy, they're not a result, right? If you think about all the things that may go into an economic development plan, what's the result that you want? Do you, do you want Trinidad, Trinidad to be known for authentic tourism, you know, experiences? That leads you into how you're gonna market yourself, right? You know? We hear what Darcy said to you everywhere, that tourists want authentic local experience. They want to come and experience, you know, the Hispanic community here, what's it like? You guys do cars, you do chihuahuas, we want to, we want to experience your food too, right? And it's, you know, when you hear Vale talk like that, you know, Vale is, Vale is Vale, right? Well, there may be all that, there may not be, but that's another question. We're actually working with the city up there. But even people with lots of means, I mean, rich people, okay? People with a lot of means, they'll come in, and they'll spend fifteen hundred dollars a night at the Four Seasons. Those folks are looking for an authentic experience, talking to a ski bum who's operating the lift, or on the lifts. In the bars, they don't talk to each other. We do that, you know, when they go down to our city. They don't want to talk to a person living in Colorado, living the life, you know. It's true, we hear this ringing everywhere. And if you hear it in Vale.
There's a sociological study that's out of Yale professor, he wrote a book called Billionaire Wilderness. And it addresses this issue over and over again, when he studied Jackson Hole, the Yellowstone Club. And he thought he was kind of an insider, and nobody had that inside take. He's a sociologist, and he puts social science to it, it's got graphs, charts, science. Billionaire Wilderness, it's on this day, it's on, and it really talks about philanthropy, but it talks about why, why do billionaires go to Jackson Hole by ring and roach? Because they don't want to be seen as billionaire, and they want an authentic experience, and they want to sit next to the former at the bar, and have that honest conversation.
My daughter, sorry, my daughter works at the Yellowstone Club. She manages nine people's houses. And they don't want to talk to her when they have a house, because she lives there. And if I heard it there, they want, they want to clean with people who live there. It's really interesting.
I, I think what that then would drive, set any kind of festivals that we have, have to try, have to pull both locals and visitors, because then there won't be that interaction.
Well, if your festival is authentic to Trinidad.
Yeah.
Then that's what you're providing, you're presenting, right?
Crested Beets, most popular, most successful festival, was solely for the locals, and never meant to be for anybody else, and they've had to make it secret.
Says the Beer and Chili Festival?
No, it's Benetton.
It's Benetton, yes, right.
Have you ever heard of Benetton? It is a very unique festival, and it got discovered, and people started flying over private jets, and they were changing it, and the locals had, and said, okay, so you cannot find out what weekend it is, it's always around the same weekend, when the dinner is, and how to buy tickets, you have to be able to, it's secret, and it's because the locals, it's really, it really is important to the community, it's building the community, and it is community. It'd be like inviting people who come to the resort to your Christmas party. And so I think that's what I'm trying to exclude, is when you talk about tourism, it'll come if you're authentic, and your community is strong, and it provides something unique. And you don't really have to do much to get it here, maybe you'll have to market it.
You will.
But be careful with it, because it's also to create your community, so it's thoughtful.
So, so thoughtful lesson.
Sorry, if I went on to.
I'm just sharing my experience.
No, we need that information, of hers, we absolutely need that.
I mean, how do you, because it's a twenty-plus-year festival, and it's close, it's not close to the public, people can still come, but you can't find out.
It is a unique thing.
Economically, I take it, they don't need tourists to come, they're too bad festival, there aren't. So we need them to come, but we want them to come for the right reasons, and for the right experiences.
Well, and that festival was never, it was always free, no, there was no generating of money. It was literally free, I mean, we never paid to go to Benetton. I mean, you might have had people fly in to be in hotels, but that was never part of that, and it never generated that, and when it started, they.
You know, one festival that I think is an enormous success is the Rad.
Yeah.
The Rad Dirt Fest, that brings people in, and that's about as authentic as, as we can.
And that's ours completely, or is that other places?
You know, if you do white races, so, the unique thing here is only gravel.
Right.
Right? That's unique, that only happens here, basically. You know, in Ganso and other places, it's single truck, right? Not here, it's gravel, you know, and I, I talked to the, to the couple that own, you know, one of the bike stores here, and it's all about gravel, and they want to have these big races and stuff, and that generates a ton of local interest, and, yeah, it's changed.
It is changed, because you see bikes all over, you know. And I think that, that festival had a huge effect on it.
Yeah, but it did.
But I, I'm not, I don't want to, you know, prefer one festival over another, but.
The festivals will change you too, because people are gonna come here, and they may like it, they may want to go here.
It's okay.
Now, does that, that festival go up through the county too?
Yeah.
I know, I see them on the highway, but I don't know, do they do the dirt in the county?
Yes, yes, that's.
That's cool.
Ninety and hundred and twenty miles.
All I know is a lot of it happens in the morning before I get up, so.
When you're done, they can come in for a coffee.
Yeah, I just hear.
So we've kind of delved into festivals, right?
Right.
And so what I think you're trying to influence is how your, how your view, right? How tourists view Trinidad, right? So that's almost, another thing you could say, is that you'll do a branding study. Okay? That's playing the plan, but one of the things about branding studies is you can ask everybody. Long-term residents, you know, recent, you know, imports, business owners, neighborhood associations. What's our brand?
I think our lodging tax advisory board is in the process of doing that.
Oh, good, oh, awesome.
The lodging tax advisory board.
Well, that's appropriate.
So it's kind of a, we have to kind of figure out how we're working together really well, because the city council, I think, should be very much involved in the conversations. But if we, if we delegate that entirely to your lodging.
Don't do that.
And that's basically kind of what we're doing right now.
I recommend you get that. Because, because they, they may, they may take a tact that really runs counter to the values of the city.
Right, and.
Especially if the hotel owners are running it.
They're not, they're not.
Okay, that's good.
It's a cross-section.
That's good, but you should definitely be involved in that, and have it come back through you before it gets public. They're appointed by you, right?
Correct.
Then it can come back through you.
I can just add, it's the.
Yeah. You could say, working with.
In tandem.
What do you call that group?
Lodging Tax Advisory Board, LTA.
The city, working with, however you say that.
LTA.
LTA, that's right.
Say, working with the LTA, the city will complete a branding study. And what happens sometimes when you put groups together like that? They sort of think they're representing, you know, if they're a merchant, they think they're representing a merchant, doesn't work that way. You gotta take it out and ask people, and talk to people.
You know what's something's unique about the lodging tax part? Almost all of them are new to the community, aren't they?
Ah, okay, okay, well, that's, that's not enough.
No, not that long.
That's, that's not enough.
They're all with them, and working together.
Yeah, that's an idea, and that's, that's the opportunity. If you look, I mean, you can say something in your, you know, your preamble to this plan, is that you want this plan to be for everybody, right? Whether there's a plan, or whether there's initiative, you want people who've lived here for generations, and people who just got here to work together to achieve these things. You can say that straight up, and you can also embed that in all your methodologies, right? So, you know, developing a branding study, you could operationalize that. You could do it in a way that involves all of those groups. People who have an interest in, you know, preserving the heritage of the community, and people who want to sell bicycles, right? But if, if it's just people who have been here for a short time, you know what's gonna happen. The people there for a long time are gonna feel like it's not about them, it's not for them, and they were left out of it. And that's the problem that you've got, is that people are being left out.
Because the sentiment that divided, that was the most common thing, the divide between the two, right?
It was the most common thing we heard, and we heard it from all you, and we heard it loudly in the focus groups, and we heard it loudly with your own staff that live here. It's thematic. And what you want to do, is to us, that you want to be conscious about that divide. In everything you put in this plan, how can we implement that in a way that brings the community together? And doesn't exacerbate the divide, certainly.
I understand, and, but I'm thinking, maybe the reason why it was so prominent in the, in your interviews is because you interviewed right after the election.
Okay, say more, please.
So what happened in the election, there were eleven? Twelve people vying for three seats on council, and none of the newcomers came close. The gentleman, Mr. Hsu, that wasn't be able to be here, got as many votes as I did as mayor, never put a diamond in it, didn't advertise anything, and I spent a lot of money on mine. So I think that outcome of that election is, because, and I, you know, I don't know, but it left some sour taste in some of the people that ran for city council.
I think I heard that in, in at least one of the communities, that, you know, and that's where people are saying, well, the past is dominant, right?
But it's changed, and they don't understand.
Okay.
I told somebody the other day, this last election that we had last year will probably be one of the last where that happens, because the city, the community is changing.
More people are coming in. Well, and that comment, you know, that, that election, you know, signaled that people aren't really invited to the table, right? It's something to pay attention to.
It's something to pay attention to, but, you know, the newcomers, actually, a big majority of people that serve on boards and commissions are what we consider new residents.
Yeah, that's what your staff said too.
Yeah, which is good.
Yeah. You appoint them, right?
Yes.
I, I, I think though, truthfully, we do have to take into account all the strategies. And it may be just as, as minor as involving people in the conversation, or purposefully involving them in conversations.
Just remember, that's usually what, that's where it starts, is doing involvement in the conversation. And you have to go to them, obviously.
Yes.
I'm very likely.
You provide a reason for them to come in.
Yeah, we have wonderful conversations.
That's all good.
Yeah.
That's really.
Yeah, the beauty shops and the barber shop where you get true conversations, which is wonderful.
There's a, there's a barber shop in Ganso, and you guys goes by Fast Eight, and that's where that conversation. I also get some of my best hunting tips sitting in there waiting, right? It's, it's real culture, it's awesome.
Yeah, people just went to the beauty shop, and now it picks the whole world, you know. You get it all.
You get it all, all the solutions.
On a three-hour, this three-hour package, you got it all.
So that, that goal, and I think we're gonna adjourn here, just, you know, Mayor, we can't even pick this up, because I think everybody's worked hard, and, you know, we could probably end the day, come back tomorrow. That signals that you're gonna be involved, and you're gonna, tomorrow, you're gonna write a vision statement, I think. So you're gonna be really involved in identifying how Trinidad identifies itself, right? Do you, just think about this, maybe, come in in the morning, do you also want to measure tourism dollars that are spent here? Because you do influence it.
Yes.
Because we can justify it, by, by having those figures being justified.
That's correct.
Because it's a viable industry.
So you could let, and you can. You can say by, let's say, five years now, right? And this is twenty twenty-nine, right, twenty twenty-nine. Tur, the X number of tourist dollars will be spent in Trinidad annually.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, last year.
I put it out five years, and then you start measuring it every year. And maybe the state tourism office does that, once a year. Yeah, and whether or not you trust your numbers is a question. Whether or not they actually measure it, well, I don't know.
I'll put them in well. Because I would assume whenever you consider a tourism-driven business is where they pull the sales tax dollars, which would make sense.
But it's not complete, because people who are camping here go to say, oh, yeah, it's been. That's, that's what I'm saying, there may be, there may be some models that are more completed, how they measure it.
They do that, or use a bunch of models.
Yeah.
Use them, because the state park is going to. I, I think this, this year is gonna be, it's going to have an impact. Because that one trail is open to the tour.
CPW runs, is that right?
Yes.
And we have a pretty good partnership with them.
Do you?
I'm assuming, I don't know.
Yes.
First year.
Do you have a CPW office here?
Yes.
We do.
Oh, that's good.
Well, I know, uh, council knows that the two people employed by CPW, the one that runs Trinidad Lake State Park, and one that owns, that runs Fisher's Peak. And that's, that's a huge advantage. Trinidad, there's less than a mile, three miles from one from the other.
Amazing.
You can walk from one to the other.
Yes.
That's a beautiful.
There's a, there's a gentleman that works as a consultant at the dealership in Springs. When he, after his vacation, he comes down and, and, uh, the lake and stays a week, because he doesn't want to be bothered.
At, at Trinidad Lake?
Trinidad Lake, Monument Lake. Monument Lake, incredible. I spent, I love Monument Lake. That's, that's just, that's my place, that's my happy place. Go past Monument, and that's, that's ours too, yeah, that's our water. So I was like, that's our water. But that place, if you, have you gone up that direction?
I visited Trinidad Lake, but not Monument or North.
Oh, and then you have, and you have time, take the loop, you come out of Walsburg.
Okay.
You just go all the way around through the charla vida, but North Lake is just the most peaceful place there is.
Is that more, is that a kind of a mountain lake? I, maybe I drove past that.
Yeah, it's got a little down on the end there.
Yeah, I did drive past that.
Yeah, that part of the lake, it's just a nice place to sit and fly fishing.
That's really pretty. Yeah, it's, it's just perfect for kayaking, kayak fishing.
And I honestly think that should be our tourist, tourism driver, whether anything isn't, is that. You know, it's not so much as downtown, which they will come to downtown, but that's a great market, well, I said.
But it's that, people who fish those lakes, do they go to La Vida or they come here?
If you know, they're, well, it depends, because if they're, well, now, Monument Lake, it's different, because they have a restaurant that's, that's luxurious and a bar up there, and they've got a lot of things going on.
Well, CPW stocks both lakes really.
Oh, yeah, so there's plenty to fish, but I mean, like to stop and eat and spend something, and then I think, that same gentleman has the shopping bag now too.
Yeah.
And that's in the county, and then just bought the one in, is it, about this?
Yeah, four of them.
So stay in Trinidad.
And you're only an hour from everything, not even forty-five minutes, right? Forty-five minutes to go up, fish, come back down to town, it's pretty nice.
I think I saw that play. So, Mayor, do you need to adjourn this?
No.
No, you just, we're just gonna continue tomorrow.
We don't have any hours tomorrow.
Okay. Get, get rest, everybody. And the whole board of your colleagues are calling you in the morning. Great job.